Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 9th, 2024.
Recording in progress.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 9th committee meeting. We're going to get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So just so everyone knows, Dr. Carol is with us, but she's with us on Zoom. So I will be facilitating the meeting this evening. And with that, I'll ask for us to take a look at the agenda. And just let me know if there are any changes to the agenda. And I think the only one that I've noted or I want to note is that for the superintendent's report, we're going to move the school committee student representative, welcome to the top to make sure that we can let our students go back and do their thing. This evening, I imagine they may be working on homework and other stuff. So we'll make sure we can get them earlier on the agenda. Anything else, any changes? All right, hearing none, we'll get going. And the first item, actually, we're going to get started with public comment. And this is the portion of our meeting when individual community members share their perspective with us. Individuals may speak up to three minutes apiece. And just as a reminder, the school committee members will not directly respond in the meeting to questions or concerns that are raised. People can join to speak either in person or online. We just ask that folks introduce themselves along with their address for the record. Is anyone here to participate in public comment in person? All right, I don't see anyone. Now I'm going to ask if there's anyone virtually who would like to participate in public comment, to please raise your hand. Anyone, Mark?
Nobody's raised their hands.
Okay, so that ends the portion of the meeting. And now we will move to super meetings.
So before we get to meet our student representatives, some are returning and some are new, I just wanted to mention a couple of things before our other agenda items. So it's been three weeks since we met last, and a lot has been happening in schools, as you can imagine. We finished out all our open houses, which was great. I was able to go to all of those, connect with staff and parents. And it was just kind of like, it's always an exciting time of the year where there's a lot to look forward to, a lot of positive spirit. It was really, really, really nice. The next thing, I don't know if you all saw my communication last week to the community, but we're working on a community engagement event, potentially tied to a building-based event that's already scheduled, just so we can get more people involved. The idea behind this, kind of similar to last year where I did the Listening and Learning forums, wanted to continue that, but in a slightly different vein this year, where we're now talking about, this is the work we're engaged in, give a chance for community to come in and both hear from me and from their principal. So it's an opportunity for the principal to also talk about, kind of, these are the things we're doing here, whether it's at Glover or Cunningham, wherever it is. These are the things we're doing, kind of reflecting on some of the district work we're doing, but also kind of personalizing it at the building level. And I think these are the kinds of things that I plan to do year after year. I think it's really important to be out and connect with people as we're continuing to move along with our implementation plan. So that is coming, and information will be coming soon on kind of logistics around that. We are continuing with our kind of recasting of professional learning. We've got our first big professional PD day in November. We've had, we'll have a couple of half-days before that. We had one, we have another one coming. You all know, because you've arranged childcare and things like that. So no surprise there. But we're really, really excited in planning for November and feel like, you know, the onus is on us to make these opportunities for staff really meaningful, impactful, and also work towards building coherence collectively. So it's something that Regina has taken the lead on and is meeting with lots and lots of people to help to bring that together. So there'll be more to share on that soon. Our action teams for our implementation plan are getting off the ground now. We kind of didn't try to start them right at the beginning of September because we had so much just kind of getting into the school year that we had to do. So we kind of shared information this week with those teams. We'll be starting to put the work together, though you're going to hear tonight from Jenny and FA, who are going to talk about Prior to Area 2. And they'll be sharing a little bit more about the structure, what the year is going to look like for their action teams, the work they're going to accomplish or are planning to accomplish, and kind of giving some, kind of, a vision of what this is going to look like. Monster Dash is on the 27th, mark your calendars. And that's, that's what I've got here. So if there are no questions, move on to our student representatives. And Bow, do you, do you want to introduce them? Do you want me to, or should we have them introduce themselves?
Let's have them introduce themselves, because I'm sorry, I do not remember everyone's name.
That's okay.
Especially last name.
Maybe they can come on. Adam, you've got a knack for timing. I did get your message. I was like, I really hope he comes, and then you walked right out. So do you all just want to kind of introduce yourselves and maybe talk a little bit about kind of why you're either coming back or why you're kind of a first-time representative here? Then I imagine the school committee will have some questions, too.
Okay, so my name is Elia Skodos, and I am the junior representative for our school committee. And I've come back, this is my third year doing in this position. And I think one of our societal and institutional strengths here in Milton, especially here in Milton High School, is diversity. And I've really appreciated all of my peers and all of the different people from different backgrounds in cultures and nationalities and religions. And I've really sort of gotten a chance to learn more about their story. And I love to, you know, express their views when it comes to all the issues we face. So I love doing this work.
Hi, my name is Sydney. I'm the senior representative. This is also my third year doing, kind of working as a school committee rep. And so I got involved about three years ago because I was kind of interested in the school committee. My mom's a teacher here, so I kind of knew what was going on, and I was looking to get more involved. And over the years, I've become really passionate about it, and I've realized that it's kind of an extension of my civic responsibility. Obviously, like, I can't vote, but here is an example of me exercising like my opinions and the opinions of my peers in my community to the best of my ability. And so through that, I've become really passionate about this, and I really like this work, so yeah.
Hi, I'm Olivia Wolfson. I'm new this year. I'm a sophomore rep alongside Adam. I decided to join this year, I think, because it's always been, I've always been taught that if there was anything that I want to like change or have a voice on, I should just come to the table where it's being done. I also think, as has been said, it's important to have kind of diverse voices in these kind of spaces. And I think I bring a new voice and a new experience to this kind of group. So I'm really excited to work with you all, and I think that I can bring a lot to us.
Hi, my name's Adam Cheers. It's good to be joining you again for a second year. I was here last year as a freshman rep and continuing as a sophomore rep with Olivia. And I joined because I was really curious about what it would look like for me to take ownership in my education. And being in a group like this, I've had opportunities to engage with bigger district questions and see where, you know, we can meet the opinions of the students with faculty and with the administration. So I look forward to doing that this year as well.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
Yeah, I think people can ask questions.
Yeah, any questions that members have of the student representatives?
I guess, what are you most hoping to accomplish in the upcoming year?
I think last year, we really dealt with the issue of the calendar and religious holidays. And I think if we can take that to a further step via a subcommittee, I think we talked about that, you know, in the last meeting, the last year, back in the spring. So creating that subcommittee and really engaging on that different level is the next step. And if we could settle that, if we could create a plan, the deadline for the 2026 school year is, I think, November, early December. So, you know, finalize the calendar. So I think we could do a lot of work with that in the next few months.
Yeah, and I think we're also looking to make some decisions around phone policies that are more district-wide rather than kind of based on the schools to make certainly the transitions easier for students and just also make sure that we're inputting the opinions of students and teachers. So like, the decisions that we're making are reflecting kind of a greater group of people.
Yeah, and then just really quickly, obviously, like as Elia said, like, we're, we had a really big discussion on the calendar last year. And then as Olivia was kind of talking about, we're looking to expand, like, we put in a lot of work into that issue. And now we're looking to other issues, like cellphone policy. I think the budget was brought up, so thinking, like, asking students and parents where their kind of values lie in terms of that, but coal situation. So yeah, just expanding our work on last year.
Long story short, I think we want to focus on those issues and by extension, kind of create a communication between this body and students, which hasn't always existed. And so I'm thankful to Dr. Burrows for opening that and energizing students to feel valued in conversations relating to cellphones or to the calendar and being willing to hear those voices. And also to you for having us back.
Great. Any other questions?
I just have a question. So how do you guys decide what areas you want to address? Do you all come to the table with them? Do you have a discussion? Do you reach out to other students? Like, how do you, how did you wind up where you wound up with those priorities?
We meet every month with Superintendent Burrows and then Bow to meet and discuss like the issues pertinent to the school committee. And then within that, we kind of talk about the issues that we think are pertinent to the student committee, so student community. So with that, we're kind of able to narrow down which issues we think are kind of, we should discuss the most. And then it's always changing, though, always evolving.
And then the relationship is also mutual. And so we're constantly ready to hear, maybe, what are some of the things that the school committee will want feedback or opinion on by students and teachers?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. It sounds like you have quite a robust list of topics to look at, and that is great. And I think the fact that you're taking the time to make sure that they align with what you're concerned about, and you think students are also thinking about it. I think that's going to be great. I know they're just sort of watching you and all the work that you did around. The calendar was very helpful as we continue to get, be more thoughtful about that and get more information. So I appreciate that. Dr. Carol, I don't know if you have any comments or questions? Want to make sure you get an opportunity as well?
Thanks, Selena. Just hi and welcome back and welcome to our members. And yeah, thank you for the work that you're doing. And we, you know, we do need to move quickly, I think, around that issue of the calendar. And so sorting out sort of the plan for that, that's a practical way to continue gaining information. I think it's, it is something that we need to sort of figure out within the coming weeks, obviously, so we're ready to participate in a way that impacts this next year's calendar. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. Thank you all so much, and hello from the windy city.
And I'll just add that it's bound, I love meeting with all of you. And we also see it as our role because school committee is governing here. Students are existing here. And we need to like, I think the two of us have talked about, we really need to be the glue that kind of like helps to like, figure out how to bring like your voices to issues that sometimes are, you know, like, if you want more chocolate milk in the school, the school committee might not make that kind of decision. But just kind of like figuring out how to make what you all want to see happen actionable. So I think that's something that Val and I are really committed to in, in supporting you all and in having strong voices here. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for volunteering again this year, and welcome, Olivia. And we're very excited to work with you. And as Lisi said, this calendar conversation is going to happen very fast. And we are meeting again in two days, so it's pretty fast. So yeah, we're looking forward to see what you can bring back to, to share with us.
Thank you all so much for having us.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. We're looking at the future school committee members.
All right, have a good night.
All right, thank you very much.
So I'll continue now into implementation plan, quarter one report. So as we've talked about previously, this is the first of...
Do you want me to share the screen?
Yeah, you might as well, yeah. This is the first of, you know, essentially four reports over the course of the year, quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, and then a final report where we sum up the work and we look at our data. And we reflect on that vis-à-vis what we've committed to and talk about kind of what, what we're seeing in terms of our progress and how we might make changes going into the next year. So that's our, that's our structure. Tonight, as MCAS has coincided, MCAS release has coincided with this report, we realized that we could, we could couch the MCAS data presentation into our Academic Excellence Prior to Area 1. So we're going to start with, with that. We're going to then switch, or we're going to continue, rather, with Prior to Area 2. And you're going to be hearing from Dr. Effie Shavers and Jenny Beliveau, who are going to be walking us through the action teams that you may recall from our, your One Action Plan. It's, we talk a lot in like 2.1, 2.2, 2.3. It's, it's kind of an insider thing that, we should probably just call it something else. But they're going to be talking about those three different groups, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, if you recall from our numeration. We also have some folks here that are virtual. So we have Brian Saleh, Kristi Chafetta, and Kat DeRoche, who are here, and Vivu, who is our, our data guru as well. So we've got lots of folks that have been active in helping to put this together and who lead this work, too. So they may be jumping in occasionally as needed throughout the presentation. Before Regina kind of jumps into these slides, I did want to say relative to MCAS that one of the things that we've reflected on kind of from last year to this year is, you know, our, our implementation plan 1.1 is around building an instructional framework. What we have realized as the data has come out is we need to have a system where we're really unpacking this data, looking at it alongside our other formative, summative, diagnostic assessments, and, and figuring out on an annual basis how we're going to be using that data to make changes mid-year, like, beginning of year, mid-year, end of year as well. So that is something that we are actually this year, you know, we're not kind of waiting to build that framework. We are actually working on, on putting together a structure to, you know, essentially kind of interpret the data, not just in the central office and then sharing that out, but engaging our full leadership team and then talking through how, how is this getting to the building level, to the classroom level? So that we build an understanding, both of what is relevant, maybe, in the, in the data, maybe things that are not as relevant. And as I said, being able to use that data to make decisions around what we're doing, both at the micro level and the macro level. So that's kind of where we are. We're excited to, to build these structures and then have them kind of in place as we, as we move forward. So with that, I will pass it off to Dr. Watts.
Thanks, Peter. Good evening, everyone. It's really my pleasure to present this information to you. I do have just a little warning to start, that the slides are very dense in terms of lots of words and lots of numbers. And that was intentionally done because we will post these on the website so that they're accessible and there's information explaining them if someone were to open them and hasn't listened to this presentation or isn't sitting with someone to answer some questions. So there's a lot of information. I know school committee members may have had a chance to preview it this afternoon. So if we could go to the first slide. And MCAS is quite an undertaking. It's one of the multiple sources of data, as you know, that we collect here in, in Milton as well as across the state. But we firmly believe that it's really only one data point that many other forms of evaluation go into evaluating and supporting your child's learning here in the Milton schools. You know, they include diagnostic screeners, formative and summative assessments, performance-based assessments. I'm sure you hear your children talking about iReady and Boost, Dibbles. We have an SEL screener, which we'll hear more about this evening, too. And then we have curriculum embedded and unit assessment. So all of those are important parts of your child's learning profile. It's hard, though, when the Boston Globe has it on the front page and you're thinking, oh, my goodness, how is my child doing? We, I just also want to say that here in Milton, we gave approximately 2,000 3rd through 8th graders the math and the ELA. MCAS, the science, the science MCAS was to 5th grade and 8th grade. We had about 650 students taking that. And we had, at the high school level, approximately 250 students taking it, too. So it's, it's quite a large number of students doing that. No surprise, they were released almost, actually, two weeks ago and a day. So we have just begun the process of digging in and understanding what's happening. The district received the hard copies of individual students' reports. They've been distributed to the schools. They're being put in envelopes, and you will have them by the end of the week. They should be coming home in the backpacks. So I know that will be a question everyone's interested in about, how did my individual student do? Tonight, we'll look at some statewide trends and some Milton trends, all right? So all this data today was pulled from the DESI website, and it is linked on this presentation. Okay, from a historical perspective, in the next slide, just to give you a context, and the reason why this is meaningful is because you'll hear us talking about 2019. 2019 was the last year that MCAS was administered pre-pandemic. And the state has put in a lot of effort to examining student performance and getting it back to the 2019 level. So the big takeaways from the statewide perspective is that ELA scores declined across all grade levels. Very concerning to DESI. They're putting out a number of grants and initiatives to address these literacy, lack of progress in getting back to the 2019 level. Math scores also declined, but not to the same degree. And there was some unevenness in the pattern. And science scores improved in grades five and 10, but then also they noted a decline in eight. So it's really clear, and you'll even see this is true on the Milton results, that it is not a clear linear projection to return to our pre-pandemic levels. The other piece that the state has spent some, quite a bit of effort and time talking about was accountability indicators. And one of the strong correlations they have identified and highlighted for districts to be aware of is that high rates of absenteeism correlate with MCAS achievement. So they are asking districts and supporting districts to really look at that as a problem. We'll talk a little bit later about that issue, too. And it also relates, I mean, often when we think about MCAS, we think about academic excellence. But it also, SEL is really clearly related to that. How a child is feeling, how connected they feel to the community is important, and we do believe impacts their attendance at school. So the accountability indicators, just so you know from our perspective, there are six of them. It's the achievement and growth on ELA scores, achievement and growth on math scores, science MCAS achievement, English language learners' progress on access, the, the tests that we use to, to level students' English proficiency, chronic absenteeism, and high school metrics, if applicable. So obviously, we don't count those in the elementary school, but in high school, graduation rates, dropout rates, and advanced coursework. So the major takeaways here in Milton, which are similar to the state takeaways, but the first and most important thing that I really would like people to be grounded in is that Milton Public Schools students continue to outperform state averages on all state and across all grade levels. Look at our district as a whole. We, so that is good news. But we also need to think about areas where we would like to focus our attention and input. We experienced a decline in ELA in most grades and mixed performance in math. The ELA grade four gained seven points. And this is a high point. Grade 10 surpassed, this is important in the state, their 2019 performance. As I said, we're looking back at that year as an important indicator year. The other thing I want to say is, even though our science results declined this year, they're really back to, they're back, it's, it looks like a decline, but in reality, they're back to the 2019 level. It's a reminder that sometimes when you have, they did so well last year, so it looks like they declined in comparison to last year. But when you look longitudinally back, it's actually not a decline. We are back to the 2019 level for science. So science is only, just a reminder, is only given in... So science is only, just a reminder, is only given in two grades at the elementary, at the fifth grade and then ninth grade, right? I'm sorry, blanking on that for a second. But it's because there are fewer years you're taking the science, actually, eighth grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade. So you are, there's a smaller sample size here, so it looks like it's results. So we'll go back and look at that when we put up the scores. The next slide talks about priority subgroups, which are what we are using to look at measures of accountability. And our 10th grade ELA scores are really bolstering the students in our subgroup, subgroups. But when you look down at different subgroups, we have identified areas of concern. In science, the performance of all students in priority subgroups has declined from last year. And although students in subgroups are, continue to perform better than the state, they do not, they do not perform as well as students, as our white students or other groups of students. So we're really concerned that students with disabilities, English learners, low-income students, African-American and Black students, and Hispanic and Latino students, really supporting them, having them feel part of the community, and looking at their achievement in subgroups. Here's the overall results. This is a lot, but we thought it was important to have it all out there. So this compares last year, this year, and the state. So last year, this is ELA results. Last year is in the light yellow. It looks red on here. On my paper, it looks kind of orangey. And then blue is the state. I think you can see it. In general, we would think a minimum of a 2% difference would be, might be more than chance. So if you don't have more than a 2%, so we're looking at the values that are more than three digits apart from each other as, okay, is this significant? It's a question mark. When you have something that is 10 points lower than the previous year, obviously, that would be significant. Depends upon the sample size. And again, that impacts particularly the science results. So that, so those are the ELA results. You can see the performance differences at different grade levels, at different schools. And the next phase of the work is really to do a deep dive into the grade level performances. And the teachers and being led by the principals and the assistant principals and the curriculum coordinators will be looking at that at grade level planning times. The next is the math MCAS, very similar. Again, you see Milton students outperforming the state, which are the blue bars. Third grade, there's no major concerns. Fourth grade looks very stable. Fifth grade, some more challenging issues on the math performance. Grade six and seven look stable. Eighth grade has the greatest gaps since pre-pandemic, if you notice. Well, you'll see that on another slide too, on a later slide. But the eighth grade is the year that we really see some changes. And 10th grade is fairly consistent. And then the next one is science, which looks a little less confusing since we don't have as many grades. And you'll see, all are above the state level. What's the word about accountability determinants? I mentioned that there are different indicators that the state looks at to determine these accountability ratings, and you'll see them on a chart shortly. We get information about individual schools and some general information about the district. But really, this is a chance for people to look up their individual schools. All of our individual schools remain highly rated according to DESI's accountability framework as compared to schools in their same grade span. So in other words, DESI compares all the K to five school, elementary schools, all the middle schools, and all the high schools. If you have a K to eight building, they're in a different group. And some schools have, I don't know, in the publics, maybe charter schools, K to 12. Those are in a different group. So these are compared to other elementary schools. I listed there on the bottom just exactly what the accountability measures they look for. And just so you know, you'll see that initial student SGP that refers to student growth percentile. And it essentially means you are looking at an individual student's performance compared to a group, the group of students that they scored similar to the year before. So if I scored a 50 last year in ELA and this year I scored a 75, my student growth potential would be higher. If I scored a 25, not so. Okay? That's what student growth potential is regarding. So on the next slide, we have information about all of our schools. DESI has listed their accountability determinations. Overall, the district, we are meeting or exceeding all of our targets on those seven accountability factors. And then they break it down for each elementary school. Okay. The next piece of this is really about the pace of recovery. Another very dense slide of information regarding how we are doing. So I'm going to call your attention to the left portion of the slide where it has Milton ELA result, this is all ELA. The left portion of the slide is the percent of students meeting or exceeding last year, the last, in the last five years. So each column is a five year. Reminder that 2021 was the hybrid year, and that was also the year where some students were able to take the tests remotely, some took it at school, and we only administered half of it. So there is great caution in looking at those scores. People have raised concerns about it. So some people are saying, we shouldn't even be reporting it, but we are. So it's on the chart there for your reference. The 2019 is obviously what the state has chosen to look at as our pathway back to recovery. On the path, you'll see that you will look at 2019. It's not, again, as I said before, it's not a linear path. And if you compare on the right side of the chart, it shows you the percentage meeting or exceeding compared to the state at a given, in a given year. So the, I don't, the fourth from the right shows that 5% of, excuse me, the state had minus 2% and we are at minus 5 in terms of the percent exceeding where they were in 2019. So meaning, we are doing, we're doing worse than the state? In terms of the percent of improvement, yes.
Percent of improvement, right.
So we were higher. So it's a little, it's, you think about, our scores were higher, so we're not progressing as quickly as the state average. I don't know, V, are you, V, did you want to add something to that? You do a really beautiful job explaining that. I'm not sure that I did as clear a job as you can.
Sure. So we are, in this chart, we're basically looking at the rate of change of progress back to, in the first, in the first set of columns to the right of the slide, we're comparing ourselves back to 2023 as compared to the state and the change that it made over the last year. So in that grade three ELA, how you would read that slide, it is, we have a five percentage point decline from last year, whereas the state had a two percentage points decline. Okay? And what Regina is talking about is that our scores are usually much higher than the state. So, and the state obviously is a state average. They have a lot more students in that sample size than we do. So we use the state numbers as kind of a gauge to see where we are as compared to the state average. And then the last two columns are comparing our progress back to 2019 versus the state progress back to 2019. So in these sets of number, what you're seeing is we are, for the most part, in most grade level, are making faster gains back than the state. So whereas we only have, for example, in grade three ELA, we're only nine percentage points off from where we were in 2019 versus the state is 14 points off. Okay? And then if you look down all the way at the 10th grade ELA, what you see there is we actually are higher than where we were back in 2019. So our grade 10 students are making steady progress and, you know, accomplishing even more gains than what we had hoped for, which is just back to 2019.
Which is definitely a highlight of the MCAS, our 10th grade performance. The next chart is very similar. It's the math pace of recovery chart. So multiple grades are steady, grades three, four, five, seven, and 10, when you're comparing them to post pandemic, post pandemic, that would be on the left-hand side of this slide. But, you know, we still have some work to do to recoup skills when you look at the right-hand side of the slide. Grades four through eight, grades four through eight, the first, the first through fourth, there, I'm sorry, I'm losing it on this, on this chart. I didn't write down enough. So it's just, you see that we, comparing it to 2019, we still have some work to do in terms of the percentages. And science, similar on the next slide. Again, this is a smaller sample, sample size, but we have similar results. We're making progress on recouping, but not totally there. Subgroup performance is the next piece. And we, when we compare the subgroup performance of our district's subgroups, in the green is where you see we are leading the state by a double-digit, double-digit difference in percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding. So there's lots of good news there, but we still cannot overlook the fact that our subgroup students, when you compare them within Milton, are lagging behind. And we want to support them and continue to develop programs for them. Clearly a complex picture. In every subgroup, in every content area of Milton, students perform better than the state's subgroups. And in many cases, as you saw in all those green boxes, it was a double-digit, double-digit. Historically, the differences still exist between our subgroups within our schools. The subgroups that we are focusing on are students with disabilities, English learners, African-American and Black students, and Hispanic-Latino students. A word about chronic absenteeism, as the state has identified, that is a critical variable. If you want to, the next slide shows a graph. One more. One more of our absentee rates. There you go. This is a graph. The blue line, which is, if you're looking at 2018, 19, it looks like it's the fourth one up, the thicker blue line, is our average student attendance. One thing I call your attention to is on 2018 and 19, the lines are more closely clustered together. And still, even though we've made progress and students are attending more often, there's still pretty large gap in how, between our subgroups. We want to really tighten that up, for sure. So just so you know, this is actually the percentage of students with more than, with more than 10 absences in the school day, in the school year, sorry. 10%, sorry. So more than 18 days out of school. So these are students with more than 18 days, more than 10% of, they've missed more than 10% of school days. 18 days is a lot. It's a lot of learning.
So if I'm reading it right, the Asians are the least likely to take absence from school?
Yes.
Not surprised.
So there's a strong correlation between attendance and academic performance. It's good news that our chronic absentee rates have been declining in all of our subgroups with one exception, which are the English learners, whose rate has really not improved. Others groups while improving are still concerning. As I mentioned, there's still a gap greater than we'd like to see. We really remain committed to these priority subgroups and feeling like attendance at school is very important and how to build a sense of connection and culture and support as well as academic support for these students. You know, we, we've already developed some plans to do that, individually reaching out to students and their families, counselors and teachers, letting them know they're important, that they should be in school. We are talking, we have family resource officer who supports them. System-wide, we want to address family needs, academic programming, as well as staffing positions. And we've really looked at how to support our English learners and what staffing we need to do that and plan for that in future budgets. A slide that everyone always is interested in is peer district comparisons. And every year, DESI has comparable districts based on demographics, grade span, total enrollment, as well as the presence of special populations. So they, they have included Franklin, Grafton, Holliston, Neshova, Natick, Needham, Sharon, a whole host of places, Wakefield, Wellesley, and Wilmington. And then we pulled some neighboring towns and put them on the chart in the next. So, so I have to say that, well, we have a lower per pupil spending per, the average, lower than the state average. Milton is still doing quite well in comparison to these other districts and has the lowest rate of chronic absenteeism. And all of that data is on the next chart. And all of that data is on the next chart. So you'll see where we are. Um our ELA math and science is stronger than our geographic neighbors. That would be Canton, um Braintree, Dedham. But not necessarily true for our DESI comparables. And our, if you look, our per pupil spending is close to Braintree and Wallpole. And we did better in all three testing domains. Um and we're most probably, when we, when Avi and I really looked at this, we're probably most comparable to Wallpole, especially the percentage of students with high needs. And we are doing better. So just wrapping this up, I know it was a lot of talking and a lot of data. Um MPS continues to outperform the state in all tested areas across all grade levels and within priority subgroups. Grade ten, hooray for grade ten. Uh they've made steady progress and gains in ELA, surpassing its pre-pandemic level. And it's recovered to a pre-pandemic level in math also. Um grade three math surpassed its pre-pandemic level. And our chronic absenteeism rate even is declining for most subgroups. So all of those things are good news. And we outlined on the next slide a few next steps of things we were thinking about and working on, including analyzing student and item analysis um with our grade level teams, particularly in math. That's really one of the first steps we're thinking about. Refining and implementing a standard tiered instruction in math. Reviewing, analyzing our ELA curriculum. And the coordinators who have joined us will speak more specifically about this in terms of answering your questions. We also are looking to strengthen our tier-one instruction and prioritize chronic absenteeism. And the final slide, which sort of relates all of this information and hopefully puts the MCAS in context, is that it's one standardized data point. As Dr. Burrows said earlier tonight, it's used as a benchmark for what students have learned. Assessments help us identify areas where students need additional support, and it holds school and the district accountable for our programs. Um and we've really identified challenges within our community that are going to be directly addressed by the work of our action teams as we build systems and processes to work on academic excellence and culture, climate, and well-being. Now with five different things up here listed that I think directly relate to supporting our students. And the action teams will be focusing their work on doing that for students. So developing a shared instructional framework, a multi-tiered system of support, continuous improvement of professional learning, supporting diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, and social emotional learning. And I think that's a really nice segue to talk a little bit. I don't know if we wanna do questions at the end, or?
Maybe we should entertain questions. That's a lot of information coming our way.
Yes, it's a lot.
I think I was.
Yeah.
So that would be my inclination.
Okay.
If there are questions from.
Our comments.
Um I'm, I guess I can start. Um I think this is great. You know, I love that we're highlighting the positives, but also focus, you know, kind of saying there are areas that we need to work on and get back to um pre-pandemic levels. And I know it's, the journey back is much more complex. And it's not as easy as, oh, okay, next year, we're gonna do this and this and this and improve it. So I really appreciate the thought that has gone into all of this. I love that we are really focusing also on absenteeism, you know, and that connection that has been made is so important. My first question is, what exactly are we doing? Like, what are the steps that we're taking to kind of reduce that? Like, is this, like, are there follow-ups with families? And just trying to understand, how do we, how do we reach out to kind of help with that?
So if, obviously, if an individual family has concerns about their student, the first place they start is discussing it with their teachers. As a system, we do have a lot of system-wide work to do to support. And, you know, we've begun that work in a very systematic way. Right now, the task for us is to dig in to and analyze these results, looking for more patterns, looking for effective strategies that are working, refine our curriculum pieces on that. Um but as I said, if you have individual concerns, it would be important for you to, the first step is to reach out to your teacher.
I could talk a little bit to this too, because it's something that, you know, that wasn't related to this, that these MCAS data at all is previous to that. Last year, you know, DESI's major platform was chronic absenteeism. And that was, if you went to any DESI meeting or conference or or anything, they were, they were always talking about chronic absenteeism. So it's something that we were very, have been really well aware of. Um I would say, impact overall has been more significant at the high school. And I think a lot of work happened at the high school last year. You may have heard some rumblings around detentions and things like that. So there was, there was, there's definitely been a lot of work in setting up systems to, to, to both help students understand why it's important to be here. And, you know, and obviously, we're coming out of a time when it was like, you were virtual, you were here, you were, you know, like, I, I think our culture, like total culture, and this is like statewide and national culture, changed around. And this is not like a mass issue, first of all. Chronic absenteeism is a national issue. So, so we, at, at every level, you know, principals have worked with staff, have, have, I would say tightened um our processes to make sure that we're conveying to families the importance. And sometimes, you know, something like a detention may be helpful for a student. Sometimes it's not, depending on what that student needs. So it's something that I'm sure Jenny, you know, in her role as Director of Counseling and SCL, could speak to later too, in terms of the work that is done in terms of family outreach, because a lot of these issues are, they're not simple issues where we need to tell a family, being at school is important, and then it happens. We need to, we need to go and meet families kind of where they are, and it's a family thing. It's not just a student thing. So, so that is something that we have done a lot of work on and continue to. Um I, I think that's, in some ways, that, as you see the, the decline from our peak um in twenty-two. I think a lot of that is a result of, of reaching out to students and families and engaging and helping to understand what the issue is. Is it a block in terms of the student not, not wanting to come to school? Is the issue transportation? You know, like, there are myriad of things that, that, that can cause that.
Yeah, I think that's great. Um I noticed, I know, like, even on the reporting at Pierce, like, when you report, you know, your kid is going to be out, there are criteria that are, you know, seen as excused and unexcused absences, which is really helpful to as a parent, you know, like, to understand, okay, my student, my child is not gonna be excused if something like, uh if I'm taking them out for travel or whatever it is, you know. So um I think that helps to give families parameters in terms of what is accepted and what's not. So I think that's great.
I mean, it's interesting, because it's at a time when, like, in the professional world, everyone's going virtual and like, I think it's, there's like a dissonance in our culture, too, in terms of.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Yeah.
Or maybe just a, um, so recognizing that it is layered, right? It's layered. It's not one reason for anything, to your point. It could be transportation. It could be a number of things. I think one of the issues is, the concerns is, do we have? So the staff to meet that need, especially when we look at, we have very few counselors, guides, counselors, therapists, which, you know, just, in, in my work, I see, like, this is a hu- a huge issue across the board. And it's not always a simple issue, and it's not a, oh, I just didn't want, you know, it's, 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 it's nothing, not one simple thing. But when trying to address that need, there are only so many adjustment counselors, so many therapists. So I think that that's a piece that we really will need to figure out to make sure that we have the support there to address it, because it is really, it is really complex. I do, there is a part of me that kind of laughs that the headline was chronic absenteeism affects scores. It was sort of like, was that a surprise? I mean, it was sort of that big headline, and I was like, well, of course, if you're not there, you're not learning. So I, I don't know. That's sort of, not like a red herring, but it just sort of felt like an odd thing when DESI came out with it.
I did have a question too around looking at some of the, so we go through the different scores by dist, by school. And then when we get into, what did you call them? Because there's so much information here. Yeah, the rate of progress. And then it's more on a, um, is it that one? Yeah, the, it's, yeah, the subgroup stuff, it's, it's, it's a big, at a whole district level. And understanding that there are some schools that are smaller that you wouldn't, you know, it, we're gonna get into the ones and twos and fives. So I recognize not having that. But are we looking at some of these? Some of these levels, these scores at a school level as opposed to right now? And, and seeing, because, you know, in some of these, looking at it, you know, you get concerned about, you know, are there, are there schools more impacted than others? And just really being able to look at, at it, at that level and, and seeing where that need is to address it and.
Absolutely. You know, some of the earlier slides do present information per school. But the subgroup slides, we did not break it down there. That information is available. This is just so much. We thought it was important to have a global understanding of where the district is and each individual school. The other thing on these rate of progress, a point that I did not make really well, I was trying to make but didn't express myself very well, is in grades four through eight, those were our first through fourth graders during the pandemic. They were at a critical time in their educational life in terms of learning to read and learning early numeracy concepts that impact later functioning. And you'll notice our, our rate of progress in the grades now, fourth through eight, our previous first through fourth graders, is not as strong as our tenth graders are doing great. But they were, they were a little older when the pandemic hit. So it's showing us that we really need to look at that subgroup of kids as a whole and supporting them.
Dr. Carol?
Thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation, Dr. Watts.
You're welcome.
So, um, one, just following up sort of on what you were saying, Amanda. I mean, it seems clear, and this is not new. Um but, you know, Tucker clearly is facing different challenges than our other elementary schools, or they're being addressed, leading to different results. So just wanna make sure that, you know, as, as you move forward, obviously, we've tried things over the years, Tucker and Pierce, obviously. I just think it's important to name that, you know, we have two of our schools that are uh where the data is quite a bit more concerning. But on the point of, um, like, the grade level cohorts piece that you were just talking about, Dr. Watts, I just wanted to clarify one piece. And it actually is on this slide that you pulled to. So just, it, you know, and I'm always thinking about how members of the community, you know, are hearing the overview of the data and, and what their level of, like, understanding might be with how, like, what this even is capturing. So just looking at Tucker, for example, on this slide. When we have the Tucker grade four, like, that is last year's grade four as compared to this year's, or, sorry, two years ago, grade four as compared to last year's grade four. Right? So like the twenty twenty-three, so those are not the same cohort of kids, like.
So they're currently fifth and sixth graders.
So actually, just to my, for my own clarity, like, if we're looking at the Yelp, the twenty twenty-three Tucker grade four, forty-six. But then you look at Tucker grade five, forty-six. That cohort of students actually kind of was flat from one year to the next, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's not that that cohort of kids from one year to the next, like, performed so much worse than they had before. But it does raise questions about, like, as you were just saying, I think, what is happening for that group of kids that might be different from, say, um, the class before and after them, which are performing better than them? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yes.
I know you, I know that, um, you know, you indicated that you're gonna, from this point on, you'll be going on to do some of that more like fine-tune analysis. But I just think that, like, those kinds of, um, taking a step back can help people, like, think about what is it that I'm actually seeing here? Like, what does it represent? So I just wanted to bring that up, but then, uh, kind of relatedly, because the last thing I wanted to just appreciate in what you said was, yes, that MCAS is only one of like so many different kinds of data. And I know that, Dr. Burrows, you're really focused on building new systems to make data-informed decisions. I'm wondering, or I guess at hoping, requesting that, you know, in one of our future reports, quarterly reports, you know, could we maybe have additional, when we're getting, getting updates in this priority one academic excellence, like some, some additional data from some of those other sources that kind of help us gain those additional snapshots of, like, how we're doing growth-wise, for example, with iReady data or, you know, whatever it might be that helps us in the community then have that, like, more contextualized picture of, like, our trends when it comes to this kind of academic performance, basically. So just put that out there, not, I guess, I'm not asking any questions that need answers right now. But I appreciate all the work this represents. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Lizzie. Um I would echo, I think, a lot of what, what's been said. And I think for me, the story is very similar to last year, which is again, what's happening. At Tucker, can we continue to pay close attention? Because regardless of what you look at, it's the school that continues to lag behind. And I keep, you know, saying to myself, we are such a small district. Shame on us. We should not be letting any of our, of our schools lag behind. Because we're small. We're small, and we can do something. And I, and I love the fact that we're building the systems that we need in order to be able to track the data, look at it more carefully, and then be able to intervene accordingly. The other part that I was thinking about and something we might wanna consider, and I'm sure you will, um but continue to think about the supports we need to put in place for English language learners. I think we know that it's a growing population in the district, and we are not necessarily equipped to meet the needs. And so, and there's gonna be a lot of intersection, obviously, between the English language learners and the other, the other, you know, demographics that we look at, like, is it low income? Is it, you know, are the parents not speaking English? And if so, what do we have in place in the district in order to be able to have conversations with the families, et cetera? It's complex, and I know it's a lot, but I know that that's one area where we don't have the staffing that we need. So something for us to continue to note and pay attention to if we wanna see improvement, because that's the one group in terms of chronic absenteeism that's not necessarily trending in the right direction. Then, but thank you so much.
And I was, and I was gonna mention that, you know, as we lean into FY twenty-six and budget development, you know, looking at where do our resources need to go and, and moving away from equal to really targeting our resources more. moving away from equal to really targeting our resources more and, and having like honest and open conversations about that. And I think that's not just at this table, but I think it's in the broader community too, to look at, you know, if, if we want some of these data points to move and really reach students, we have to do something different than status quo.
Right.
So what does that mean? And then what does that mean in the context of, of a budget that, you know, as you looked at that comparison across other school districts, we are not a high spender, right? So, so that's something that I think I, I'm excited in, in conversations with Celeste. She, she has a really good eye of kind of what's needed and is, is very much focused on, on engaging with everybody in terms of what, what resources Tucker needs to, to move the needle. So that's, um, that's exciting. And she's, and she's, she's actualizing a lot of things right now. So this is not like wait for a system to be built and then everything's going to be fine. This is like, what are we doing today? And, and responding to, to, you know, an understanding of, of every class, where, where are things kind of working really well, where more supports need to go in and, and then moving on it.
Yeah, and I also like to highlight, I know things have improved at Pierce, but you know, it is concerning when you see some of the, some of the data points. And so, you know, even giving that school the importance that it needs in terms of like, what are the resources they need to really catch up those students you were talking about, right? Like, uh, from grades four to eight that really need the support. And you know, I know, I, like 10th grade does great, but what about, like, I would love to see those sixth, seventh and eighth grade students really, you know, grow and get really positive results. And I mean, I think just having this information is so helpful too, because I think even at the state level to kind of, you mentioned, I think in your update to us about having funding towards the LA programs, like this is so important to have. And I'm glad there are investments that are being made because I think we need it, you know, and I, students need it. And they, they went through a lot in the pandemic and it's phenomenal that we're using, looking at this data year over year and just kind of, you know, putting, giving it the importance that it needs.
I think you're right to think about Pierce.
Yeah.
Because grades, it was fourth through eight last spring. So now it's the fifth through ninth graders, the ninth grade class that's currently here.
Yeah.
Those were the vulnerable.
Yep. Thank you.
Couple of questions. I guess one question I have is going back to your point of like the multiple data points in our interim assessments. How, how aligned were the results we were getting throughout interim assessments to this data we're seeing today? Like how kind of, how far off?
There's a strong correlation. And iReady, M-Class is a little different, but iReady has done a lot of meta-analyses to look at MCAS and alignment to iReady scores and they're, I mean, they're not spot on, but they're.
They're not spot on.
There's correlation, yeah.
So, and again, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting, iReady is math.
And, and English at the middle school level.
And English at the middle school level. So it's.
And Dibbles is elementary, yeah.
Yeah, but Dibbles is not a.
K through three.
It's a literacy screen, not a ELA interim assessment type thing. So I guess that'd be my question is like if M-Class is not right, providing us that, because without a, a good interim assessment, we don't know until once a year, right? Like how we are, we're getting kind of that oil dip to see kind of where we're at and that's.
Well, and something too is like, which one are you focusing on more, right? Are you giving more weight to, in, in terms of like, and this is a conversation we'll have this year as we, as we move towards like our, our kind of KPI lens, our key performance indicator lens on a yearly basis is talking about what is, is M-Class the target, so to speak? Or like what are we, what are we, what are we, what are we moving towards in terms of saying, yes, like, you know, a lot of districts will use third grade reading as like one of the KPIs that everyone, you know, every year you look at because it's such an indicator, uh, like the effect size is so large on that data point. So I think that's something that we need to talk about in terms of the dipstick that you mentioned, like is the, is the M-Class dipstick more relevant? I don't know if Kat wants to jump in here at all or not, but.
Sure. Let me just make sure I understand the question. Is it using M-Class or just clarifying what M-Class is?
I think my initial question was just, do we have the interim assessments in place right now that provide us the data we feel like we need so that we're not surprised, right? When the M-Class, like we, we know how to adjust course throughout the year to support students who based upon interim assessments are coming up as, you know, concerning, not mastering certain standards, not being able to kind of do, do certain things that we need within, in this case, ELA. And so, yeah, I guess that, that a broader question of just like, is, is M-Class like doing that for us or not?
So it's a good question and, and ties into this conversation around assessment in general, which I think is one that we need to keep revisiting as a leadership team, as well as this group and informing the public about what these types of assessments are. So Mark, I know you're in the field, so you have a different knowledge base, but M-Class is in certain ways on its own in terms of an assessment and the information we get from that assessment. Meaning it's a very high stakes, it's very different for students to take that assessment. So there are variables that we don't recreate intentionally in the classroom on an ongoing basis. To your question about interim assessments, we do use our curriculum embedded assessments. And as you know, in particular, and the committee knows because of my presentation last year, we are looking to review our tier one curriculum and one major component of that is the assessment packages that different curricula have in order to calibrate and use with fidelity interim assessments to give us more information that's more predictive of this type of a performance assessment or summative assessment like M-Class. We're at a point right now, which is typical of an implementation after seven or eight years where teachers are using and availing themselves of curriculum-based assessments that are standards aligned, but not necessarily curriculum aligned. In other words, um, we're not finding we have what we need at the moment, which we already knew based on some data we collected last year and which is why it led us to a curriculum review. So it's definitely a major focus and part of the rubric that we'll be using to examine current high quality instructional materials for the reasons you mentioned. And also to make sure that we're supporting teachers with what they need. And I mean, you know, an M-Class analysis, like the one we're having right now is super high level. But it's going to look really different when we use this data for, in my case, and in Brian and Christie's, like this helps me look at across the district, what does tier one instruction need more of at every level in general for all students and subgroups. And then with a teacher, it might be item analysis or looking at student writing symbols, which unfortunately Pearson hasn't made that very easy this year. So we're still looking to see how we can use that information with teachers. And then again, different when we talk about it with families, you know, how can we help families make sense of what this means and what it doesn't mean for their students? So I think it's a good question. I know that I went a little off topic there, but I think it's helpful to think about this assessment, the purpose of it, how we can use it and what other assessments we can use to really build that student learner profile in relation to state standards.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I, M-Class as a measure of an individual child, right, is not, should never use that as a measure of like, does a kid, as a kid's mom. But I think it is a fantastic measure as relates to like how we, again, from our seat as a district are looking at how we are preparing our students to master grade level standards. And so, you know, from that, that is, I think, fair pushback cut there of just like clarification of that is the lens in which asked that question. I think that's part of the lens of the framing at the beginning of when parents get a report, that report is not the be all end all of like your individual child. An individual child is much more complex, the district is more complex, but it is a helpful stand in. I did have some other like gap comparisons that I was looking at that I just wanted to kind of share if, if I could and like talk through. Is it right if I share my screen? No, I can't, but. All right. So I have a couple of things. So I love charts and I really love all the data and I appreciate all the patience you'll have. So a couple of things I looked at was just obviously like the primary metrics here, meeting and exceeding percentage within the grades, SGP. And again, I appreciate the definition too of SGP. I think SGP is a great one because it's not just like, hey, our kids were high last year, they're obviously going to do pretty well this year. It's like, how much do we grow the students compared to the average? And the state average is always 50. So if you're above 50, that means you're growing them more than the average kid in the state. And, uh, obviously there is no SGP for science because it's, it jumps. So all that's pretty helpful. And then state percentile ranks to say, you know, where do these metrics for us, our raw numbers, put us within the state as a whole, I think is again, very helpful. And I found this interesting because as you said, our ELA performance was not as strong as our math performance on like a meeting and exceeding basis. But actually our growth in ELA was much stronger than our growth in math as relates to like how we performed across the state. And I think that's pretty true because of the state as a whole, again, that reported that they had a pretty big fallback in terms of their ELA performance. So overall, our kids grew more in ELA in three through eight than compared to this, the average. So I think that was pretty interesting. This is the comparison we were talking about in terms of the schools, which again, I think is a really important thing. I just echoed the sentiment that Lizzie and Selena both made around like, and you made about Pierce, around like Tucker and Pierce. I just would love to hear more about like, what are we doing? Obviously we have longer term things of how we're going to improve instruction across the district that will help lift all boats. But like, we really need to be doing something in the immediate to say like, what are we doing to support those, those kids or specific cohorts within Tucker? Cause I think the other thing to name is within your data that you broke out by grade, that was helpful. Cause you saw there are certain grades in Tucker that are actually outperforming other schools and others that, that are not. So, uh, obviously again, but I, I do think kind of overall, you know, Tucker just remains kind of not where we want and science was a particular one. I don't know if y'all have any like thoughts as to why that, that might be. Cause overall, science is very strong within the district, except at Tucker. So I guess that's, that's my first question is if there's, y'all have any like thoughts on that gap?
Um, Christie is online here too, so she may want to start on that.
Hi, um, thank you. I, I, you know, I know the Tucker data really stands out to me and I'm honestly, I'm pretty surprised by it. I don't have a good explanation for why we would see the data that we do have. I do anticipate, and this will be a good, I guess, test of sort of some of the adjustments we've made in elementary science this, over the last year or so. We spent a lot of time focusing on fourth grade science, both last year, and then again, we will do that this year where we've really been trying a new model across the district where all of the fourth grade teachers, we, we're sort of doing a pairing model or some, one teacher is teaching science to more than one, maybe one or two classes, two or three, depending on the building. And then another teacher is teaching social studies, so they're doing a bit of a switch. So we have a little bit more of a science specialist model happening in fourth grade with the hope that strengthening our fourth grade science program will help us create better results for our fifth graders. And I think, um, I know Tucker, Tucker being the example, the teachers there have been very involved in that work this, last year. So those, what I'm hoping we will see is that those fourth graders are now fifth graders and we should see some significant improvement in science. It's tricky because science is a three-year grade band also. So while the data, we see the data in fifth grade, it's possible that there are elements of that that are based off of third or fourth grade experiences. So we're sort of slowly working our way back in the grades to try to build up our science program. But it is an anomaly. I think if we were to look at last year's data, it definitely was not in that same, um, at that same level.
Yeah. Thank you. I, the other thing I saw just or one of y'all's thoughts on related to like school achievement is just Calico, right? I think it's important to shout out, Calico is kind of heads and shoulders of, you know, compared to the other ones, right? They're especially in math, achievement percentile, meaning exceeding, just GP, ELA SGP is again, equal to Glover, so it's not quite as high, but their overall achievements in ELA is again, pretty significantly larger, higher in terms of meeting and exceeding. And just wondering if there's anything within that in terms of operationally, like the, the schedule or the way in which Holly is utilizing her staff or just anything that y'all, y'all are seeing or maybe not, and it's something y'all are still looking to kind of investigate as relates again, just learnings that we can try and take elsewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, just knowing the structures at our four elementary schools, I don't, nothing stands out to me as some structure at Calico that doesn't exist at our other three schools that we would, you know, that was intentionally put at Calico and then we would move over. So I think it's, I mean, these things, I guess we've talked about throughout this presentation are multi-layered, right? So I think it's, it's kind of looking at what, in, in terms of the needs, both at, at individual buildings and cohorts within those buildings and teacher teams. I, I think it's, there's not like a one size fits all answer to, to that. I think historically, I know last year, Calico and Glover were both schools of distinction from Desi. So I think there's a, a long history there of, of very high, high performance. And I think our focus is really on, on, it's not necessarily taking a structure from Calico, but it's more looking at what are the needs in our other schools and, and helping to lift them up.
Yeah, I just didn't know if they had again, like more common planning time, right? More observations that like Holly's able to do for some way within her schedule and get in the classroom to get feedback or. Again, I know we try and create kind of consistency in systems across, but I also know principals have autonomy and like they, they're all, they're all quite different. So, yeah.
Well, those are all things where, you know, as we move forward, we're looking at all of our schedules across, again, not just at the building, but across all schools. So we are, the work we are doing to align practice is kind of bring all those different pieces of our structures into place to have conversations around what's working and not working. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe that there's a specific like CPT there, you know, like a planning time or something that's really different, yeah.
Just another in terms of like, just trying to look at, given one of our goals from school committee is right, focusing on kind of historically underperforming groups. And so looking at kind of some of the selected populations, this is low income versus non-low income. So we obviously have a pretty good big gap in performance. I'll say like all these gaps exist across the state. And so, um, but I, again, I think it's something that we as a group should be very aware of, like what are the existing gaps that exist within? And y'all showed a lot of this kind of within the table, uh, which I think is, uh, which was fantastic. I appreciate that. I think the one in particular in terms of these groups, I just want to highlight, cause again, concerns about is the students with disability versus non-students with disability. And then kind of I did the same thing here with our racial groups. And obviously again, our black students kind of in every category, far kind of below our next level. Our next students doing a little bit better, but still again, not, not close to where they are in terms of the overall average and the other three groups. And so just in thinking about those two, the other thing I, I wondered was how does this compare with the state? Cause again, we know these averages exist across the state. And one thing I want to flag is like our percentile ranks for these. And one thing I want to flag is like our percentile ranks for these things, right? Our district ELA percentile rank, the orange is our like overall, all students is where we rank across states. So again, we're in the top 10%. Fantastic job. But if we just compare our black students against black students in every other district, we drop, we're below the 80th percent. And the exact numbers over here, we're like, so we are, it's not just that we have a gap internally, it's that we are serving our black students at a, I don't know, worse, not a worse rate, but like we're, we're not serving them as well on average as districts across the state. And that's true for ELA, math and science. And then same thing if we look at students with disabilities, again, our overall percentile rank in terms of how we're performing in these three subjects, or students with disabilities, if we're just comparing that with districts and their students with disabilities, each of these drop. And so I, I think like, I would love to just, as we talk through kind of improvements and like, you know, all the work that y'all are, y'all have done and y'all will continue to do to kind of lay down the instructional growth, I think just hearing about how in particular, we're thinking about these kind of lowest performing groups and working to improve the educational opportunities that they have within our district because again, our, our black students are performing much poorer. That means in order to get them to catch up, we need them to actually be doing better than everybody else in the state, right? We, we need their SGP's and these are the SGP's for the groups. We need their SGP's to be higher than everybody else because that's the only way we're going to start closing those gaps. And so I just think that's a, that's an important piece to, to recognize with this data. And so I, I don't, it's a very difficult question in terms of how we move this and it's something that I think a lot of districts struggle with. So I don't expect you to have an answer on the spot. It's more, just wanted to share my investigation and again, bringing this to the committee because I think it's again, something we've told ourselves we wanted to do. And then obviously though, if you have any initial thoughts, love to hear.
So yeah, I think this is a definitely a larger conversation that we're not going to sort of, you know, there's, I think, great questions being asked. I'm wondering too, at a high level, sort of the analysis and the way you looked at the data would be a good sort of analysis for us to keep in mind and do that analysis of the data, you know, next year as we look at it. And in other, any other data that we're looking, data points to be able to look at it from that perspective. Because they, I mean, we did see some of it, but I think we could go deeper in terms of being able to look at that. I'm just conscious of, of the time, so.
Can I share one?
There's.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Just one more because I, I want to end on a positive note of, I, I think the resource piece is again, something we talked about as a group and ask. And so again, from a scatter plot perspective, love, love a good scatter plot. How districts are performing, this is just ELA, do the same thing for math versus our per people tuition. So if you're low here, that means you're spending, we're in the bottom 20% of district spending. But we're in the, you're, you know, you want to be further to the right of this graph, that means your students are, you know, more of your students are meeting exceeding expectations. So out of districts that spend as much as we do, only one district in the state spends less than we do and has better results for students. Another one spends just a little bit more than us and has better results. But we are, and again, shout out to Hopkien and Belmont, those were the two districts there. So they're doing great, great work. But again, I just think this gets back to like the resource piece that we, we talk about of like, there is a, there is a gap here of like, you know, there is an issue where we are not kind of resourcing our, our schools as much as we probably should in order to try and reach the results we want. So again, I think within the context, within that context, I think there are some great results here and want to celebrate them. But sorry.
Can I ask one other, just one other thing when we're looking at it? And I know it's probably intuitive or obvious because you're just flipping it, but it's great to see the growth, like meeting and exceeding expectations, but there's the other side that's, that's partial meeting and partially and not meeting and it's a, you know, it's, it is such a high stakes, unfortunately, test. And so I think it would just be important as well to see that side of it, to see, because I think that does bring some of those challenges to light to then see, because if you're not meeting expectations, you're, you know, you're not graduating. And so I think it would just be important to track how that, those numbers change, even though it is just the inverse and you could make that, you know, you could come to that conclusion, but I just think it's important to see that graphically as well, to see where those numbers are changing or how that, what that looks like from a demographic and a high needs or high priority group standpoint. Would just be helpful.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're ready for.
I think so, yeah. Okay, so we've got more guests coming up. Margaret, do you want to come up too? So Margaret Carles from the Milton Coalition is here as well.
Hi, everyone. Alright, I don't think ours is going to be as dense as the.
You want to just introduce yourselves for people who are watching?
Sure, of course. So my name is Dr. F A Shavers. I'm the Director of DEIB Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging here at the Milton Public Schools.
Hi, I'm Jenny Bellabo. I am the Director of Counseling and SEL, which is a new position actually this year in the district. And a new position, of course, for me, but I've previously sat here, I've been an adjustment counselor here at the high school for the last 10 years. So I'm definitely excited about this new position.
Alright, so today we're presenting our quarterly report specifically on priority area two. And like Peter said, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3. Jenny is the lead for 2.1 and the lead for 2.2, and then we both are leading 2.3. And as a lot of you, I'm sure have seen, the implementation plan is on the website. You can go down to slide three. We believe as a district that the academic success of our students is very tied to them feeling confident, feeling like they belong to the culture of the school, the district and so on. And we believe that that's tied to the DEIB aspect as well as the SEL aspect. And so priority area two is focused very strongly on that. And obviously, the whole plan is from academic excellence in priority area one to three, we're looking at systems and operations, want to make sure that we are being holistic as we think of our students and their success. But today we'll be focused primarily on 2.2, I mean, two, area two.
Great. So for priority, priority area 2.1, sustaining an inclusive and collaborative organizational culture that fosters continuous improvement in professional learning and practice. So really, you know, like F A had said, this is really focused, you know, on SEL, on inclusion. And starting off with figuring out what are the data assessments that we're using in the district right now? How are we assessing that? What are the surveys that we're using? How are we gathering that data? And also what are all the, already the processes that we have in place? So really, especially for our first year, and we'll go into more specifics of what we're doing the first year, but you know, for the five-year plan, it really is gathering that data to start. And then in the hope that in five years, we really have all of those processes fully in place. We have exactly the data collection tools that we're going to be utilizing. We have all of the, you know, SEL curriculum and systems that we're using and that it's equitable across all elementary schools and across, you know, K through 12. And they build off of each other as we delve. Sorry.
I thought I was controlling it.
So I think it's really important, you know, again, as this is a new position for me this year. You know, we've had Directors of Counseling before in the past, but that SEL has never been added to it. And so I think it's really exciting as a district that we've added that SEL component in a leadership position and really highlighting, I think, the importance of SEL here. So I do just want to highlight, you know, why is SEL important? You know, high-quality SEL programming really does lead to academic performance. It decreases anxiety and, you know, behavioral issues within school. And so it's important that we really do have good SEL curriculum that's embedded into all of the programming. So I think just separating the fact from fiction a little bit, you know, SEL helps students understand different perspectives and shares ideas. It's not teaching, you know, a political agenda. It's not teaching students how to think. It's just teaching them, you know, different perspectives and how to share those opinions. SEL boosts academic performance and deepens engagement with content. It's not a distraction from the academics. It's not something that we're adding on to it. It's just embedded in the work that we're doing every day with our students. So as far as this first year, so for year one action plan, like I said from the beginning, really right now, we're starting to do an inventory of the assessments that are utilized. So what are the assessments that we're currently using with our students? And additionally, what are other assessments that we could, could be using? So really looking at what are those evidence-based assessments that are being, being utilized in other schools right now at all different age levels? And how are they being delivered? And how often are they being delivered? You know, reporting out on those best practices. So what are some of the best practices as far as assessment tools? But additionally, curriculum. What are the different curriculums that are, that are being used? Again, talking pre-K through 12. And then really coming up with a good system that we can, we can have once we've collected all that data this year.
So priority area 2.2, similar to SEL, we are hoping to have DEIB embedded and integrated in everything. So when you think of MTSS or the multi-tiered systems, SEL and DEIB cannot be separated from the academic achievement of our students. That ties into not just what the students are doing, but how, what the teachers are doing. What department heads are deciding for curriculum, what content areas are being covered, what books, what materials are being used and stuff like that. So similar to SEL, for year one, we are conducting a based on analysis of what the district as a whole has, what we're doing, what materials we're using and stuff like that. We are creating almost from scratch an assessment tool to collect that information so that we know where we are, so that we know where we are going forward. We also have people in place, like we have an equity coach, we have a restorative justice coach in the department that works on the district level. We also have equity leads in schools that work on each school level. Middle school has two and the high school has two, and we work very directly with principals and department heads to make sure that, again, the voices are being represented of students, of teachers and ultimately of community members, but that, we'll get to that in the next, in the, in the third one, 2.3. To highlight something that we already have, that we are using as kind of a jumping off point. I know in 2021, Claire Galloway Jones completed an equity audit district-wide and there were some findings that she reported. The equity audit is on the DEIB website for those of you who might be interested in looking through it. It's about 80 pages. So you know, prepare for that if you are going to look through it. But some highlights that she found were that cultural relevance had to be updated in some of our curriculum and in some of our subject areas. In talking to some of the department heads this year, I found that some progress has been made in some areas and in some areas there's still work to be done. There's still a lot of conversation around making sure that every student has access to higher-level classes like AP or honors. And then again, similar to what Dr. Watts shared, the MCAS data is one point of proof again, that students in our subgroups, like students with disabilities, African-American students and so on, are performing on a lower level. But then we also know that they receive a bit more disciplinary actions such as in-school and out-of-school suspensions. And so that's something that we'll be looking at to see is that's still true a few years later. And then just understanding how, what areas we're lacking in, in terms of monitoring and culture. So some students might feel like they belong and feel very strongly like taking ownership of their schools and feeling like they feel known and seen in their classrooms and some students don't. And so a lot of recommendations from the equity audit are already being put in place, like increase PD. And at Pierce last year, there was PD done with teachers as well as with students, the anti-hate speech curriculum that kind of got started. We're hoping to do that across the district. Disrupting disproportionality, again, just highlighting what are some areas where things are inequitable and how do we address those things? And then again, just continue to use data to inform the practices and the new policies that we want to put in place. So this is just an example of data that we already have, in addition to data that we'll be collecting this, over this next year to build on next steps for over the next five years. Similarly, we're doing the inventory of practices like I just talked about. We're looking at curriculum, we're working very strongly with department heads to look at what are some curriculum or curriculum areas that department heads feel strongly about. They feel like my teachers have a firm grasp on this and I feel confident that they can teach it with an equitable lens. And what are some areas that they feel like we could come in and support? We have an equity coach, Adina Schechter, who works directly with parents, so I'm sorry, with teachers. She's working to help them figure out how to teach with equity in mind. And then we have Cyrus Rivers, who's meeting on the other end with the students. So he's doing more student-led circles, restorative justice, proactive community building circles, and then conflict resolution. So we're helping students feel like they belong, feel like they have ownership of their education. And we're helping teachers, on the other hand, also feel more confident in their teaching. The assessment tool that we're building is going to be aligned with the DESI culturally responsive look forwards. It's very closely aligned with researchers like Geneva Gay, Gloria Latz and Billings, who created basically look forwards in terms of culturally responsive pedagogy. And so DESI has kind of used that to create standards. So some of the things include things like my, my, I feel known, I feel seen by my teacher, my culture is relevant in the curriculum and stuff like that. And so that's stuff that we'll be using to inform some of the work that we'll be using. But again, this year we're just building the structures because this is a very heavy work and this is work that will take more than one year to do, obviously. Priority area 2.3 is where we tie in the, the families and the community. We believe that students thrive and succeed when they feel like there's a close connection between their education and their families. And so like Peter had mentioned earlier, we are working with the action, and this is, this will come up later with action teams. So members of the action teams for priority area 2.3 specifically also includes community members. Because we want to make sure that the voices of parents are heard and that students understand that we're working with families because at the end of the day, school and home should not kind of exist separately, that students understand that. Your home life and your culture are just as important. And in the same way that when we think about SEL, your feelings, your proclivities, anything that you feel like affects your schoolwork, we're working with your families to make sure that you feel safe at school and you feel like you can be successful. So again, we are working on an assessment tool for that, for how to get information from parents and families to figure out how parents and caregivers might feel about the school, right? We don't want to assume that we're, everything we're doing is correct and we're operating blindly. We want to make sure that you also feel good about the things that we're doing, how you feel like you are, your voices are being heard, that your feedback is being integrated and so on. So again, a lot of the first year is just kind of getting that information so that we can, as we proceed, we're making sure we're proceeding on the right track. And then towards the end of the year for priority areas 2.1, 2.2 and 2.3, we're going to be presenting what we find to you guys in the annual report. In terms of the action teams, for 2.1, we have Director of Counseling and SEL. We also have SEL leads in each school. I believe there's.
Two SEL leads in each school, so we have 12 leads across the district.
Perfect. So that's already a big group. In 2.2, there's me as the Director of DEIB, the Equity Coach, the Restorative Justice Coach, and then the Equity Lead. So another big group. In 2.3, we are involving school admin, we're involving families or family members. And then we're also involving department heads. That is also a big group, but we will be a bit more selective with that just to keep it streamlined so that we can get the work done. But again, just collecting as much feedback as possible to make sure that we are. Um, but again, just collecting as much feedback as possible to make sure that we are aligned and, um, making sure we're, we're on track with the work.
Okay, yeah. Um, so moving on to data, um, so as far as current data, so as F A was just talking about, she's really building a survey, um, you know, to be going out to students regarding D E I B. Um, and what's great is that through Performance Matters, so we already have an S A L survey in Performance Matters. And so what we're actually doing is we're adding the D E I B survey to that. So they can both go out to students at the same time. So in the first week of November, um, all students will be taking that assessment. So we can kind of get a baseline, you know, assessment from the students regarding, you know, how connected that they feel as far as S E L, um, you know, core competencies areas. So I think there's two parts to it. One, that's going to be great for us to have overall data across the district. But what also what's really exciting with Performance Matters actually being linked into Power School, which is, you know, where we have class schedules and grades, is that teachers are then, we're going to be doing professional development with teachers, that teachers can actually go in and access that data for students that's sitting in their classroom. So if a kid is struggling in classroom, that they have behavioral concerns, the kid's maybe not doing as well, that they can see some of that data as far as, does this kid feel connected? Do they feel like they have a safe adult in the room that they can go to? Um, so there's going to be some of those key pieces too, that will just give a bigger picture of some of those students that are sitting in the classroom. Um, there's already been some other data that has been collected that of course the S E L leads are going to be using as we're going through all this this year, um, to inform some of the decisions that we're going to be making. And, and one of those pieces is the Y R B S data. Um, so the Y R B S was, um, done last April, um, here at the high school. I believe we had about seven hundred and eighty students that did participate in it. Um, so we'll go through some of that data right now. Um, so Y R B S is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Um, so Margaret, who else is here, um, from the Milton Coalition, they are an unbelievable partner with us. Um, we do a lot of great work with them throughout the year. Um, have a lot of students that are really involved, um, that she works closely with. Um, but they're great as far as us delivering the Y R B S data to all of our students and then them taking that data and analyzing that data and then bringing the results back to us. Um, so we do have over sixty pages of data. There's a lot of information that's really gathered on all different types of topics. Um, so some of the questions, you know, regarding topics related to substance use, so alcohol, labor products, marijuana, prescription drugs, risky behaviors, which include driving under the influence, suicidal thoughts, behaviors, anxiety, depression, self-harm, bullying, sexual assault, violence, um, and sexual activity. Furthermore, the data can even be further broken down. Um, so in comparison to, you know, years prior data, because we do the Y R B S every two years, um, it also compares to state data, because this is a state assessment. Um, and then breaks it down too with results by gender, um, race and ethnicity, and then sexual orientation. So we're just going to highlight, if you can go back one step.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Uh, we're just going to highlight just a couple of points, um, from the Y R B S data tonight. Um, so as far as M H S student assets, you know, a few things that kind of popped out at us. Um, rates of alcohol consumption, marijuana use, vaping and prescription drug misuse decreased at M H S between two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-four. Um, so we have seen rates in all of those areas go down. We'll go a little bit further into detail with that too. Um, majority of M H S students have an adult other than their parents in their life that they feel connected to. Another safe person in this building that they feel like they can talk to and they can come to outside of their family. Um, and also rates of sexual violence have dropped and are significantly lower in Milton than, than they are statewide reported. Um, so alcohol use, um, so we do have a few charts here just to explain. So, so on all of these, red is going to be M H S data from two thousand fourteen from the Y R B S. Um, the yellow is M H S two thousand nineteen. Um, the middle blue is M H S for two thousand twenty-two. Um, the pink is two thousand twenty-four, so that was the most recent one from April. And then, um, the state data from two thousand twenty-one. So as you can see for current alcohol use and binge drinking, so current alcohol use, um, is, you know, having used within the last thirty days, um, you know, it's greatly dropped. Um, so current rates and binge drinking rates had declined since two thousand nineteen and are similar to students statewide. Um, as far as, as how students view it in comparison to other substances, alcohol, um, use is definitely viewed as the least risky substance in their eyes though. That if they were to use any substance, that they feel that alcohol is the least risky of all substances for them to use. Um, so marijuana use, overall, um, marijuana use has dropped as well. Um, as you can see from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-four right now, um, have a higher percentage of, you know, males that have reported use within the past month than females. Um, as far as use within their lifetime, um, black or African-American students and white students reported the highest rates of lifetime use, um, as well as current use of marijuana and synthetic marijuana use. Um, so about seventeen point six black or African-American students have reported that they've used marijuana at some point. Um, and sixteen point six percent of white students have reported using marijuana at some point. Um, again, um, has dropped though from previous years. Um, as far as nicotine use, um, so as you can see in two thousand nineteen, um, those rates were very high. Um, two thousand eighteen was also when the Surgeon General had declared, um, youth, um, e-cigarette use, as an epidemic. So that's really, I think, when it had spiked. Um, but since then, it has started to go down, um, and we are much lower, um, you know, in comparison to the state rate. I'd be curious to see what the state rate is for two thousand twenty-four. Again, the state rates that we have right now are two thousand twenty-one. So I'd be curious if the state rate is a little bit lower at this point. Um, but across the board too, just, just another stat was that eleventh grade students definitely outpace their peers when it comes to use. That the highest amount of use was amongst, amongst our eleventh graders, um, when we did this last April. Uh, prescription drug and other substance use. Um, so this next one is, um, that chart is if they ever took prescription drugs, um, without a doctor's prescription. Um, so if they were using, uh, using or abusing a prescription drug. Um, and so that had dropped from two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty-four. So only about three percent of students actually said that they took a prescription drug that was not prescribed to them. Um, so then with mental health, um, so again, these numbers, we have some, one piece is regarding, um, students that have considered suicides, have had any, you know, type of suicidal ideation. Um, students that have reported depressed symptoms and then students that have, um, reported symptoms of anxiety. Um, so again, the numbers are lower, um, than what was reported last April. Not going to lie, I was actually really surprised by that. Um, as far as this report, I was a little bit surprised that there has been a drop in that. And I, I think it could be for several different reasons. I also think that students are accessing more support now, um, and are reaching out for more counseling support. I think that there's not necessarily as much of a stigma, at least here at Milton High, as far as reaching out to a counselor and talking with someone about it. Um, so in comparison to two thousand nineteen, um, or other years, I'm just wondering if there wasn't as much, as many students who are maybe feeling that way, but weren't getting the help that they needed. Um, but that's just kind of thoughts that I've had when I first started looking at some of this data. Um, you know, the rates of suicidal thoughts and behaviors are in decline overall and are definitely lower, um, here in Milton than they are statewide. Um, as far as considering su- suicide, um, statewide, eighteen point four percent of students reported that they had considered suicide at some point. Um, eleven point four percent of students at M H S in two thousand twenty-two reported that they thought, um, or had disclosed some, some level of suicidal ideation. And in two thousand twenty-four is seven point one percent, um, which is, is lower, but is still high. Um, there's definitely higher rates among female students, as well as students who identify as transgender or gender non-conforming or L G B T Q, um, students that did report higher rates of suicidal ideation. Um, as far as self-injurious, um, behavior, um, about fourteen point five percent of students reported that they had some level of self-harming behavior, um, in April. Um, but I think all of this data, again, as we're collecting more data throughout the year, I think this is, you know, definitely one of the data points that we can, we can use in informing some of the decisions that we're making.
So the hope by the end of the year is to have as much data as possible and then make that connection between, um, feelings of belonging in subgroups such as L G B T Q I A or, um, black and brown students or English learners and so on, and see how that's connected to the way they feel about their mental health, um, if they feel like they can advocate for themselves and so on. Um, and then again, just connect that to the academic performance and so that we, once again, can holistically help all our students and families feel like Milton is the place where their students are thriving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so at this point, we would open it up for comments or questions?
I would like to say that I love that you're connecting all aspects of it and tying it back to academic performance. I think that's huge. Uh, they've kind of remained separate the last couple of years and I love that you're focused on bringing them together. Thank you.
I, I, I would agree with that and I, I think it's, um, I think it's great that you delve into areas that people don't necessarily always talk about with respect to, you know, substance use or mental health issues. Um, I think it's important to not have it be a taboo subject to talk about. Um, I did have a question about the survey, the two surveys that you're doing and saying that they're going to be on Power School. So when the kids, when the, when they fill it out, is there that, um, understanding? Or is there the thing that, that, that they recognize? One, I assume since this is a Power School, that they're saying who they are. Um, but two, do they recognize how it's going to be used, how the, how the information will be used? And can, and then can they self-select in or out of doing it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes to all of that.
Okay.
Um, and I will say too, that the Power School survey, it doesn't, so the Y R B S is anonymous.
Yeah.
Um, and that dives really deep.
Yeah.
Like you are asking very personal questions.
Right.
Um, the S E L survey asks personal questions, but not regarding activities. It's more of how you feel. So do you feel connected to your peers? Do you, um, feel like you have the ability to make responsible decisions? It's all self-disclosed in a sense, um, of how that person's feeling. And so our hope is that that's not going to be information that they wouldn't want someone to know or someone to ask or a teacher to be aware of about them. And that we can teach them the value of us knowing that information so that we can help and be supportive and better know them as a learner and a student.
Yeah. And these surveys will be sent home, um, with the option for parents to opt, opt out of the survey or to have that conversation with your student if you feel like. The surveys are from second grade through twelve, um, just for developmental purposes. And the parents can decide, you know, I, you read the survey, you feel comfortable with it, you talk to your student, and they take the survey. But like Jenny said, it is very much, um, I feel like my teacher knows me or I feel like I'm responsible for my actions, those kinds of questions. So.
Yeah. No, I think it's helpful. I just, yeah.
I do appreciate that you are sharing it with families beforehand and bringing them into the conversation so they can have those conversations with the students, you know? And I think, um, I think more, and you mentioned earlier, getting feedback from families, you know? Like, hey, what are we doing? How can we do it better? Like, are your, you know, are you being heard, you know? And I, I think that's so, so important to make that connection between home and school, you know? Because there's this whole, like a lot of students, I remember when I was a kid, like my home life was so separate from my, my school life and my parents, you know? Like we spoke a different language at home and like there was no connection. So I just love that you're kind of bringing it all together and looking at it very holistically and looking at the whole student and everything that makes them who they are. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think the only comment that I would have similar to is the mental health data. It is surprising, um, because, uh, across the country, you're seeing the opposite. So it'd be interesting to just know more of, you know, what is, what is here, what's represented here. Uh, I'm curious about that, um, because I'm surprised. And Lizzy?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, following on what you just said, Selena, I just wanted to basically celebrate what's encouraging in that data. It's moving in a positive direction, obviously. Um, and I, I wanted to, um, just say how glad I am, Jenny, that you're now in this role, that we've been able to invest in, um, having you doing this work for the district, I think is so important along, um, with F A and, and the continued focus on D E I B. Um, is Margaret still there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Margaret, I just really would like to thank you and the, and the Coalition, um, for the work you've been doing. It, you know, if we're seeing this positive movement, it's, um, no doubt really in part driven by the advocacy and awareness raising that you do throughout our community. And so I just really want to thank you and all your colleagues and your student leaders for the work that you do. Um, and also just thank you for this Y R B S data because you have, um, you know, facilitated us being able to, um, gain access to this information every two years as it's, um, you basically, uh, you know, help us with the funding to accomplish this survey, as I understand it. And, um, it's so exciting that Jenny, you were just able to take us through that presentation of the results. I know that two years ago, Margaret, um, you and Stormy were presenting that data to us. And so I just, with that bit of like institutional, like historical knowledge, I think this is so good. This is a sign that, um, you know, the, the ownership of this data in terms of like how it informs our decisions as a district is, is, it's become internalized within the district. And that takes nothing away from your leadership, Margaret, and the Coalition. Um, but, and it's also, I think, a great sign of the systemic way that you, Dr. Burrows, are like thinking about, um, driving these improvements and investments to respond to the, the data that we have. So, um, thank you so much, Margaret, wherever you are.
Lizzy, thank you very much. Um, I think it's just, it's really a testament to our collaboration with the schools and our partnership, which is incredibly important to us and to the work that we do. The Coalition is ten years old this year. And, um, I don't think anyone in this room, including me, except you. You are the only one that has been here since two thousand fourteen and seen, wow, seen the whole history. And, um, the declines that we've seen are dramatic. You're, you started really young, so. But sometimes it's hard to wrap our heads around that because we see the moment you talk to kids and they're like, oh, it's terrible. Oh, you know, you, that, that's, that's their perception. But when you have a chance to look at it over time, these decreases have been dramatic. And yes, there have been decreases around the whole state and the whole country. But we were in two thousand fourteen, fifty percent of our high school students that were drinking in the last thirty day, thirty days. That compared to thirty-six percent across the state. We had a big problem. And there, there are not a lot of people in, in the district that have that institutional knowledge, have that historical knowledge of what was going on then. Um, so for now, um, for us to be exactly, pretty much exactly on target with the rest of the state is huge. Um, so thank you, thank you. Thanks to everyone who's been involved. Um, and we're just, I really value our, our partnership and we were able to do some really interesting and impactful things for our students, so.
Margaret, I so appreciate you putting that into context.
Yeah.
That's ten years that it has taken to do this work and how much more work we, we can continue to do. But how important it is to keep in mind that it, it's not a one year.
Right. Well, they're all, yeah, they're always new parents and new students who need to have this information, need to have their misperceptions about cannabis or alcohol or, or any of these drugs. Um, always new drugs coming out there on the street and being available to, to children. It's always changing, so we have to keep on top of that. And I'm so glad that the Y R B S is being folded, folded more into what the schools are doing because the Coalition is federally funded, grant-funded. We have four years left. That's it. Then the federal money goes away. So it's going to be up to the town, um, to figure out what they want to do with this kind of work. Because I don't believe it's just a responsibility of the schools. We're a community. We all care about our children and about, uh, the future of our community. So we should all step up and be there. My personal take.
I, I do have a question. Do you have any, I know we looked at high school data. Do you have any data like with middle school, like how?
Middle school, there is a whole, um, youth health survey report that, um, can be made available too. Yeah. Um, and our, in general, our middle school data is fantastic. Um, youth in Milton generally don't start using substances until. Youth in Milton generally don't start using substances until eighth grade, ninth grade. So those numbers are really, really low. There are some small concerns where you see little upticks, but you're going from 1% to 4% or 3%. So, but I'm sure we'll share, I don't know if the, all the data will go up on the website, but we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was one question I had is just, is the reports going to be posted on the website? Did a quick, quick search on a beautiful website.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of haven't done it yet, but.
Just so I'm understanding the graphs correctly too, the comparison to the state is from 2021?
That's the last. 2021, the data from the state is notoriously slow, but more recent data is out now and I can get you a link to that. Yeah, I think 2023 is out now.
Cool. Two other, and I think y'all are hitting in on the end in terms of subgroups. Does the report itself have further breakdown of kind of differentiation in these areas by different, how students identify?
It does.
Really great to see them. And then you're, the point you made about like state vaping, I don't know state as whole, but the CDC came out with a whole report on vaping has plummeted since, again, peaked back in 2018. So it's fantastic. It's down to like 5% of students report vaping in the last so many days. Question on the survey, similar, the Power School one, is this just like in, and I guess maybe this is TBD, but is like this a benchmark survey in some way with students who are using this, taking this kind of across the state or across the country? Is this just an internal survey and so, okay.
It's just internal and I think the hope for us is that we do it in the spring or we do it in the fall and in the spring every year.
Yeah, sure. And then over time we'll be able to assess for the first.
So we have the SEL data from last year and then this year we'll be adding in the DEIB questions. And then over the next few years, fall and spring, we'll collect the DEIB and SEL together and then we'll be able to compare them.
Yeah, that's great. I think putting that in place so we can see what that will be over time again, just as y'all were showing within this data, how that slope, all the great stuff through the YRBS. So starting to collect them now will be fantastic. Only other question I had was on the 2.3. I assume, are we like leaning on PTO leader? I know it said we talked to PTOs, but we really leaning on them for like to help lead on this?
So I'm working with the principals and the principals will be the ones talking to the PTO presidents. But we are reaching out to specifically members of the DEI committees and then CPAC. Even though I know there's multiple subgroups, again, to keep it as contained as possible. Those two, we felt like were important people to involve. And then with the principals involving the PTO presidents and having them be the messengers and, you know, to get the word out. Yeah.
Yeah, great. Thank y'all for all your.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And we look forward to the, continuing the conversation.
Thank you.
Does that wrap up your report? All right.
I can keep going.
Oh, you know, why not? So now we'll move to Chair's report, which Lizzie will be doing from Chicago.
Thanks, Selena. So this will be quick. The only topic under the Chair's report is to circle back on the MASC Delegate Assembly. And that's, takes place at the MASC Joint Conference, which is what's on our agenda here. So this has been mentioned before, but we need to make a decision because we have to submit by October 21st the name of our delegate to this joint conference, which takes place November 6th through the 9th. Last year, as you know, I served as our delegate to the conference and to the assembly. And I had, I had hoped slash not hoped, but I had hoped that I was going to be able to do that again this year. But I have realized that I'm actually not going to be able to make it to the conference this year. So I wanted to come back and open up to the group the question of whether someone else would like to, is able to and would like to attend in, you know, to represent us. That would be something we have to vote on tonight to appoint someone as our delegate. I want to just, the, the actual Delegate Assembly takes place on Friday, November 8th. I wanted to just frame this as, you know, when I was there last year, my observations were, first of all, what takes place at this assembly, at this meeting, it's the annual business meeting of the MASC. So what our delegate does in attending that meeting is vote on the appointment of new MASC officers for the coming year and then vote, kind of carry forward to represent Milton School Committee's recommendations on the 10 resolutions that are before us. We have those in our folders. Those have been shared with us by MASC. The resolutions are on a variety of topics, obviously. And then however the body votes sort of creates recommendations on those different topics. They're non-binding resolutions. What I observed in the room last year was, you know, I don't know percentage-wise what number of school committees in the Commonwealth are sending delegates to the assembly. But if we are not able to send someone, it's fine. I mean, a lot of school committees are not represented by a delegate at the conference. So I think that is a totally acceptable outcome if with all of our busy schedules, we are not able to send a delegate this year and I apologize that I'm unable to do it. So tonight though, I'm hoping to decide, like, does anyone want to do this? If so, we will nominate you right, like now and vote for you to be our delegate on November 8th. Does anyone have any questions? Or are we going to just sort of decide that for 2024 Milton isn't selling, sending a delegate? And all that means is, you know, our perspectives will not be weighing in on our electing officers and the resolutions by topic. If we do appoint a delegate tonight at our next meeting on the 23rd, we will take up the resolutions one by one and vote, you know, our committee recommendation, which is what our delegate would then vote in the room on the November 8th. So that's all.
All right. So with that, is there someone who is eager and wants to go and represent? I think we don't have anyone.
I thought I saw Mark's hand.
I think I did. So I, I think we have our answer. We will not be sending a representative to the conference.
All good.
Okay.
Thank you anyway, and maybe next year. We'll, you know, we'll get the reports on the resolutions, obviously, that are passed and then we'll be able to stay kind of connected with what MASC is doing as we always, you know, are trying to do anyway. But thank you, everybody. That's it for me.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Lizzie. And it's come to my attention that actually we missed one aspect of the superintendent's report and that is the DESI end of year report. So we're going to go to that now.
Great.
So I'm not going to go into the specific numbers or details that are contained within the report. There is a copy of the report that you have provided with the meeting materials. You can certainly take a look and if there's any specific questions, I'm more than happy to address those. I did just want to provide some context around what the end of year report is for those that might be listening or for those that may watch the meeting at a later date. So each year, the district is required to submit an end of year report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The end of year report is used by DESI for a number of different reasons, including the determination of per pupil expenditure. And we did talk a little bit about the per pupil expenditure when we were reviewing the MCAS data earlier in the presentation. So that ties directly to the report that we submitted to the state at the end of September. The report is also submitted so that we can ensure compliance with net school spending. And so for those that may not know net school spending, the Commonwealth School Finance Statute, Chapter 70 of Mass. General Law, establishes an annual net school spending requirement for each Massachusetts school district. So we are required to spend at a certain level within each fiscal year. The end of year report is a source of a large portion of the comparative financial information that's included on the DESI website. So if the community or if anyone was interested in looking at any of the information, historical information from Milton Public Schools and you go to the DESI website, that information and the financial data that's contained there is provided directly from the school with the Excel format or Excel file that we submit every year. And in reference to that, the end of year report that we submit, it's an electronic file and it's standard across the Commonwealth. So we are not responsible for coming up with the component pieces that we're reporting to the state. The state comes up with a format and sets the requirements of what we're reporting for accounting information. And then we're just responsible for submitting that information by a specific point in the year. And that timing for us is, the due date is September 30th. So that's the report that you have tonight. Another point that I just wanted to mention briefly is that the numbers are unaudited. So we are required to have an outside auditor come in and take a look at that information just to make sure that everything's correct. And that process typically happens in December and January. And we're required to submit that report by April of 2025 and which will, we can report back once we get that final audit information from our outside auditor. And so, and then of course, the state will populate those per pupil expenditure numbers. And then at that point, we'll be able to do some more of that comparative analysis around, how do we compare to the state? How do we compare to our comp districts? If we've kind of been able to close that gap because we know that we are spending below the state average. And then just really taking a look at the numbers and kind of seeing how we're able to make adjustments in our spending to be able to support the work that we're doing here.
So per pupil spending, every, the numbers are all this, so essentially everybody's submitting the same thing.
Correct.
And so the numbers are the numbers. So it's apples and apples. It's not like, well, somebody over reports this. Okay, that's good. That's where it comes from.
Yes. That's it.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Keep people waiting. Very good. So if there are no questions or comments, others, we'll keep going. So Finance Subcommittee Report.
Finance, not a whole lot to report on Finance Subcommittee. Just that we, we did have a meeting last week, right? Where we talked a little bit more about the timeline. Katie continues to train us and inform us on the things we need to know as school committee members. And so that was again helpful. We talked a bit about this, the coordination as well with Warrant Committee and Select Board. And so we've now started to nail down a date. We have our first meeting with Select Board on the 25th, I believe. And so that will be helpful, you know, Peter and Katie are already meeting with folks of the town themselves to talk through kind of finances and planning for next year. And they shared that they've been doing some internal work or begun internal work for budgeting for FY '26, which is crazy because we just kicked off the school year. That's the timeline where, yeah, I think those are it unless there's anything else I missed there.
Okay, do we have warrants for approval?
We do have three warrants for approval. So I will make the motion, I believe I've shared all these out with y'all, maybe not 13, I'll double check. But signed all these, I'll make a motion to approve warrant number 11 in the amount of $307,680.21 payable on 9/26/2024. Warrant number 12 in the amount of $454,294.42 payable on 10/3/24. And warrant number 13 in the amount of $228,559.10 payable on 10/10/24. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. We'll do a roll call vote. Lizzie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Selena?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That's it for finance.
All right. So now we'll move to Policy.
Okay, all right. So for Policy, we have, you will see. My folder. So we did not meet for Policy, but we have a second reading for Section G. We have the kind of high-level sheet that Glenn put together with the notes for each policy within Section G. They're also in the Policy Subcommittee folder from September 18th. But he kind of does a high level of all the policies and the updates that need to be made for each of them. That's in your folder. And so we will need to vote on them, to approve them. So that's really it. I can go ahead and make a motion if that works. I will make a motion to approve second reading of Milton School Committee Policy Manual, Section G. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. I'll do a roll call vote. Lizzie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Selena?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, School Building Committee Report.
Great. I think we have a guest here for School Building Committee Report. The one and only Chair of the School Building Committee, Sean O'Rourke.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you move the rest presenter to my.
Your ten minutes and it's in big.
Yeah, correct.
There are only 12.
The other one. All right, just for the record for other people, Sean O'Rourke, town meeting member, precinct chair of the School Building Committee. School Building Committee met Monday, the 30th. That was our last meeting. Just want to share with you kind of some updates that are there. So dive in really quick. Our, our schedule that we've been working for or with our architects basically has us completing schematic design, which we'll present to you tonight right now in October. Essentially with that, we're going to try to run another cost estimate to kind of refine, to see where we're at. The two things that cost estimate will play in are revisions to the plans right now, but also delay. So further escalation, so whatever is a cost savings we may realize by. So further escalation, so whatever is the cost savings we may realize by furthering the design. Make a sacrifice due to escalation due to a longer time. So originally, as we were putting the schedule together, we were looking at a town meeting in December. As we're all well aware, there's not going to be a December town meeting. Uh, when that town meeting occurs, it will kind of push everything that you're seeing here out. Um, further also, you know, there has been talk about a town vote potentially in the spring for debt exclusion for everything. Uh, similarly for a town meeting in May. As everyone knows, where any of those things, there's prep associated with that. And typically, the warrant committee for any town meeting, uh, starts meeting around February to March to listen to warrant articles and stuff. So for us, it, it, you know, this red line that you see here is us essentially running out of money. So after that, the architectural consultant walks away and they are complete with schematic design. We don't have any additional funding to keep them going. So essentially the project's at a pause or halt. Um, we do have funding for our own as project manager, we utilizing them right now. As you guys are also aware, MSBA will make a decision to us whether we get accepted or not, probably by. They were saying the end of November, beginning of December. Uh, whether we get accepted or not, we'll make a kind of decision point. What the owners project manager is going to be working on, we talked about it at our last meeting. Uh, is a, a cost analysis, whether we go with MSBA or we don't go with MSBA. So one of the things to keep in mind, if we decide to go with MSBA, we hit a reset button. We go all the way back to the beginning, restart over and again, experience further delay. Um, we'll get a reimbursement on that. And what we're trying to do is weigh that reimbursement against, against that escalation and let it feed into everybody for the decision making. Uh, the intent, what we're hoping for is if we had a December town meeting and we can kind of keep the schedule. We were trying to still hold that completion date of August twenty twenty seven for the school. That is not happening anymore. So as I said, as this, you know, these points start shifting out, uh, we're looking twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine potentially for a school. So for this committee, one thing you guys need to be aware of is between now and twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine, there's going to be space needs. And you'll have to address those very shortly. So let's jump into the fun stuff. Uh, the site, so a, as you're all well aware, the solid blue line you see here is Goult Road. Uh, as part of the land swap that was passed and signed by the governor in July. Uh, we would now take this road and move it over to the side, creating space for the school. And what this, these diagrams do is basically show you how the architects came to the kind of geometry of, of the building. So as they moved it there and set a clearing site, they identified the parking lot and kind of a shape of the building. Once they had the shape of the building, they started looking at flows of how students and faculty will come in and out of the building. And then essentially as they did that further, and the building started to take shape. What you see here is essentially their massing of it. So trying to put, you know, take two D plans, move it into as, you know, use the Z axis and make it three dimensional. And essentially this was the massing plan they created. Basically large blobs that you guys have seen floor plans, floor, but started, you know, just to let you know it's starting to take shape. The, this is the exploded view that I know you've seen previously. One of the things to note on here is part of the revisions that we made leading up to August. Is we had eight teams, we have reduced it down to seven teams now to reduce square footage. That was a decision made by uh, the uh, the seat, the leadership with the district, Dr. Fish. Superintendent Burrows and other representatives. So previously, most of the floor plans we've shown have been boxes. So what you're seeing now is an evolution of the building, uh, that, that just gives a little more depth to it. So if we focus in on that entry area that we talked about now, as you enter into the building, the first thing you'll experience is the cafeteria. So the cafeteria will zoom into that. Is basically large enough for all, all the students to be there. And one of the things to note that's not really highlighted here is this wall that will be here. It's basically, the intention is to have a partition, a quiet space for students that don't want to be in a loud cafeteria. Um, the other one to notice, and we get up to the upper floor. The upper floor, you know, comes over this curved line here and everything to the left of this in this orange space is like a double height space. So it's, it, it'll be like a very large atrium. Now, in the building on the first floor, in this corner, uh, we'll dive into a couple of the rooms. A, as you can see, we have a gymnasium. One of the things that we took away from the visioning session is the gymnasium at the piers right now doesn't have stands. So we wanted to make sure there are stands there so that you have sports games, people can sit and they're not standing against the wall like they are in the piers. Uh, associated with that, we have office space for the gymnasium, locker rooms and everything else. Also a cardio yoga room, uh, that's over here. So all of these are right sized based on previous um, implementations we've seen. Now art and music, so we do have an auditorium in here, I believe it's three hundred and fifty seats for the auditorium. There's a stage drama room associated with that, ensemble chorus and practice space, along with a piano lab. In this wing, one of the things to note is we're looking to have, you know, this may be used at off times for different things. So it's, we're adding also a restroom in this area for public, so when this is used. Now, as you go back through the building and as students would typically enter a wraparound here. Down this hallway, you'll see this is basically where we line up all the world language rooms. And this gray area over here actually used to be classrooms, but this is one of the biggest updates that we got. Is we made it into mechanical electrical space and restrooms. The reason being is with these were classrooms, there was no natural light getting in here. Because those of you who know uh, Goult Road, Brooks Field right here, there's about a fifteen, twelve to fifteen foot elevation difference. So students that'll be sitting in this classroom looking out, they'd be looking at a wall. So what the architects did is came up with an idea of infilling this area rather than putting a retaining wall here. And utilizing this solid wall of the building as the retaining walls, cost savings. Uh, by doing so, it introduces something really unique on the second floor when we get there. So, you know, the other part with cafeteria is kitchen, all the back house space that's here. And then similarly, as you e- exit out over here, there's a plaza area that we'll touch on in future slides. Um, the staircase that goes up is essentially meant to be ornamental, uh, wide open up to the upper floor. And as we transition up, you would basically come up this staircase, open up and essentially enter uh, you know, a, a, atrium area here. As you go down the hallway, we start introducing into the first team of classes, classrooms. So the makeup of each team is three classrooms, the science room, prep and small group rooms along with planning space for the teachers. Along with this common space in the middle for learning commons that basically allows everybody to colla- collaborate in the common space. Um, as we go back down, as I mentioned, the media or library area is located here above the cafeteria. And this is that atrium space down to the cafeteria. So there'll be some views from the media space down. Um, additionally, art rooms, STEM flex, everything here. Now, the unique thing about filling in that wall that's there now is we're creating a terrace on the outside of the second floor. That directly will be able to connect over to Brooks Field. So that's a unique thing, um, that we were trying to do for, for a while. Basically, the architects made it happen, so I'm very excited about that. Um, and then basically, as you get up to the third and fourth floor, they're kind of repetitive. Uh, we have groups of teens, special ed, so essentially three teams per floor on the third floor. Now, as I mentioned, we started engaging the landscape architect and this is kind of the fun stuff. Uh, so as they looked at this, that area, as you, if you, the building area right here is essentially where the cafeteria is. And this is the exterior space that's adjacent to the cafeteria, along with preschool space and play space there. So as we dive in, outside of the preschool space, first thing to note, there's shaded area down in this corner. Uh, through a typical tarp that you see that, that's a lot of outdoor spaces right now in a play area. Um, again, with the height difference that's going on here, one of the things, there will be a retaining wall along this area. And there's the opportunity for artwork or murals. Um, the, the other part is because we're going to have a height difference where that wall is there. There's an opportunity, if you look at item B, uh, for terrace seating or some type of special seating for the outdoors. And then if we go over to similar items C and D, so C is right here. Again, using that slope space, they're looking at kind of a slope play area uh, for the children. And D, again, uh, a wall space here. One of the things to note is there's additional outdoor seating here. So students that come out of the cafeteria have the ability to go outside on things like today. For me, right now, that's, that's about the update on, you know, floor plans and stuff like that. I'm sure other people may have questions, there's plenty of other slides I can bring up if there are questions and I'll um, turn it back over and just not share.
Thank you. Um, so do folks have uh, questions, members have questions or comments?
The, the design looks very exciting and it's just very, um, how do you put it? It, it's very thoughtful, um, in, in a lot of different ways. And I, I love that the library actually have this bridge that the student can just walk over to Brooks Field. Um, but I don't see that in the picture. Like the, the picture that you showed, the last slide that you showed, it shows the ground floor.
Yep.
My understanding is that the, the, the library is also the ground floor, in a way.
Yes, so, so what, what's, and I, let me just go back and share again, just so I can point to it, I apologize, just keep it up. So one of the things that you see, and it's actually a good catch, is this area that you're pointing to right here for that terrace area. Uh, the, the landscape architect had the, the, the terrace area that we talked about. From here on the second floor, so it's the second floor that basically walks right out. Um, that area that they're looking at is in works right now. The, the stuff you're seeing from the landscape architect was done before they could accomplish this. So originally it was all open space back there. And this, that's one of the gray areas between the design that we're working on right now. Obviously, we get more funding, we'll finalize it.
Awesome.
Great, any, any other comments? Lizzie?
Cool.
I just want to make sure I don't miss Lizzie if she has anything.
All good, all right. Um, so just again, Sean, thank you. I know how much work has gone into this and thank you for walking us through that timeline as well. And sort of where we are given sort of the turn of events and um, we're still in waiting mode and uh, we need to see what happens. But anything else from?
Yeah, for the school building committee, uh, kind of continuation of last, we don't, we don't have so much language on this. Do anything other than discuss it, uh, is there's two more articles that the school building committee. All right. I got it. Sorry folks. Uh, kind of continuation of last, what we talked about last time, there's the two warrant articles. The school building committee voted on uh, to send to, to recommend to select board, which was funding for continued design. And then full funding, the hundred and seventy three million dollars for the full project. As warrant articles go to town, to again, as Sean said, the December town meeting, which now won't be in December, I'm not quite sure when it will be exactly. Um, so that is still in front of this group to discuss and weigh in on if we so choose as to whether or not we vote to support those warrant articles. That's I think what the school building committee uh, would ask of us is that we, you know, um, would throw our support behind that. Um, one or both, but I think both, given they both supported it. Um, to so that both school building committee and school committee could be aligned in asking select board to kind of put those warrants out there. And then further was the conversation we started to have last time, but we were in the absence of a couple of our members. Which was related to the discussion of the pre K program uh, as a potential cost savings of. You know, we are at, the school project that came in obviously more expensive than, than we wanted to. Um, the only way to cut this is timeline wise, which as we talked about last time, that's not going in the right direction. We're actually going in the wrong direction from a timeline perspective because of some delays we're, we're running into with um, getting out in front and votes. Um, but the other one is cutting square footage and the clearest way to cut square footage. From my perspective at least, would be like the pre K program. Um, there, so anyways, that, that was uh, something kind of I brought up as a point of discussion wanting us. And it's been clear in our conversations that the school committee is the entity, again, that like sets what is the programmatic element. For the new school building construction. So we are the ones who've set the K, the seven, eight and preschool program that the school building committee is working towards fulfilling. So we would be the ones who would vote to change that if, if that's what we want to do. So again, we don't have votes on the agenda for any of those three items, but um, we could continue to have the conversation today or delay it.
Good, yeah.
Yep.
So just, just to chime in, so um, I watched the last meeting and saw the presentation for, between the preschool. And uh, also the, the, you know, the potential of having a field there. If I can, I'm just going to share every screen one more time. And something that, you know, for the land swap, people may not have remembered. So. Part of the land swap, when we did the land swap, there was a transfer of conservation land, there was also a transfer of parks land. So along Randolph Ave, where the access road is, it's kind of skewed a little bit. This is going north towards Boston, this is going south towards Randolph. So the access road that goes up here, over the summer, I met with the Parks Department. And one of the questions was what can we do with the land that's coming up to us as a park department for that goes through as part of the transfer? So what happens is when we looked at that, Parks has about four point five, four point seven acres as part of the land swap that's there. So there's acreage up there as part of this land swap that they gave up on Goult Road that they're getting at the access road right now. So one of the things I've been trying to do is work with a consultant to see how much of this land is actually usable. It, it, from Conservation Commission, there were concerns that part of the land may not be usable. But for Parks, what I tried to do is sketch in a soccer field for what you could fit up there. So when I looked at it, you could essentially fit two soccer fields up there right now on the space. Now, the other thing that's of note here to keep in mind is the yellow line that's here that bisects these two parcels that we're looking at. Is the lease line for granite links, right? The, there's potential to, you know, my understanding is at some point that lease line may get changed. And then that may open up additional opportunity to gain additional access up here for more parkland. That's at least the hope. Um, and then so this, you know, i- if, if the in, in installation of a field, you know, to create a field to cut the pre K. Yeah, yeah, there's other, you know, options that are also there too, that are out there. I just say it just for, you know, everyone's knowledge before you make a decision just based on a field. The other part is when you look at that too, if you delete the pre K out, you ha- and you're going to build a field. You also have to look at the cost of what it's going to cost to build that field. The pre K is about eighteen million to take off the, off the total number. What is the cost to build the field? The other one too, to give a true apples to apples comparison, if you're going to keep pre K at uh, Cunningham and Tucker as, as they are now. There are certain classrooms that are not built for pre K that are being used for pre K. What is it going to cost to renovate those to get them to the same level as what you would get on Goult Road? And as you do that and weigh those numbers out, then make your decision. Um, the other part to keep in mind too, if you do the straight math, the hundred and seventy three million right now that was posted on the town website. The tax impact on the average home is about eleven hundred dollars a year. If you take off eighteen million off that, it's roughly a hundred dollar a year to a hundred and fifty dollar a year savings, just linear math by doing it. Um, so again, even though it sounds like you're making a large savings there, when you're talking tax impacts there, you're talking about a hundred dollars per year. To cut out this preschool that would, you know, to, the preschool component of uh, classroom conversions of some of your cannibalization is eating up a lot of space. It's also eating bathrooms that can't be used by other people there too. So, you know, it, it's, it's complex, it's not as simple as just saying to cut square footage and do that. Also keep in mind, as I mentioned, we went from eight teams to seven teams, that was a concession already made there too. Um, so, you know, a- as this stuff starts coming around, I just bring these to light so everybody's kind of on the same page before you make a decision.
Great, thank you. Um, I think per the agenda, we're not uh, prepared to take a vote today. Uh, but definitely can have the conversation. And I think Amanda, it's you and I who were not at the meeting. Um, so um, definitely, and for others, if there's other uh, thoughts that have come up since the last uh, meeting. Um, this would be a time to have it and I, I think that's the extent. And I think that's the extent of the conversation that we can have today. Lizzie, please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think that's, I think that's right. I think, you know, this, these are big decisions and we should take the time to fully consider them along that line. And I think it would be good and important for us to sort of access some additional like concrete information to the points that you were just raising, Sean. I don't know how we will do that, maybe needing to work with. I don't know, I guess through the school building committee, I'm not sure if it's through facilities, to understand what the cost would be of sort of accommodating the pre-K, continuing to accommodate pre-K within the existing elementary schools, things like that. Like Sean, what you were just saying, allow us to like do a cost benefit analysis to make a decision. I think the fact that town meeting is not happening in December, clearly, like we do have some time to consider this before we move forward with a final recommendation from the school committee. So that's just my current thinking, but I'm interested in, in this discussion, which will continue.
Thank you, Lizzie. So Amanda, I don't know, I'd hate to put you on the spot, but if you have any sort of initial thoughts? And definitely, I'm happy to share mine as well.
Well, that was my question around, you know, the, I thought it was an interesting idea about the pre-K, but it's, but it does seem like there are so many other, so what does that then look like from a space planning standpoint? Like, things have been designed or planned out in a way that those classrooms are coming out. So then if they don't come out, what, what are the implications? Like, I just feel like there's a lot that I don't understand about what that would mean if it didn't, if there weren't a separate building. You know what I mean? So it's sort of the whole picture right now. It's not, it's not the same picture just by moving it back in. Does that make sense? So so that piece is, I feel like I don't have enough information to really say whether it seems like a feasible solution. I guess one of the questions I do have, and when we're talking about the delay, delay, because the town meeting isn't going to happen until at least this spring, is part of what the work that you guys are doing, is there, as the best you can, is there a cost implication of, you know, the escalation costs for the delay as you're looking at things? Or is there, and then similarly, it sounds like you said, so there's a decision of some sort going to be made in December. Is that just a next phase decision or a final decision? Do you know what I mean? Like, is that like, okay, this next round made it, have people made it here? Or is it, okay, Milton, we are, you get them funding?
So for MSBA, it would be an invitation. So it'd be an invitation into their corporate, which means we'd be eligible for the funding.
Okay.
That's kind of external for MSBA, they make that decision. You know, we've applied four times, we haven't been approved. Fingers crossed, hope we get in. But even if we get in, like I said, it's a decision that the town to look at it, say, do one hit reset and wait seven years. And, you know, figure out what the short term mandates we have to do there, what are the costs of those? And then what is the additional escalation on this overall project? Things to keep in mind is MSBA cause, cost reimbursements get diluted. So they advertise it at 45% right now. There's caps on how much square foot cost they'll pay for. So if we have a building that's $800 a square foot, they only pay $600 a square foot, we have to eat $200 a square foot. There's other things that play in for classroom sizes and bigger for MSBA compared to what we're doing. We actually have smaller classroom sizes that we work with the district. So potentially, the building may get larger. So it's for me, you know, the good thing we have consultants right now that are experts on this. I'm having them really dive into this to really do that analysis and then honestly present it to us as a third party. So we can kind of weigh in on that decision. So, you know, if we get in in December, it's a, it's a very tough decision. There'll be this committee, our committee, select board and all that to kind of weigh in, you know, all weigh in on it. It's, you know, it's a very important decision.
And so the people who do that, the, the math for that, the figuring out the cost difference, is those, is that the, who does that?
Our own is project manager, PMA consultants. So they've, they have experience on MSBA projects. And with the program we have now, they're running through the kind of laundry list of spaces that we have to understand which ones would be, which ones would be reimbursed and which ones wouldn't, and try to see what the diluted factor would be.
To your question on escalation, they were, within the cost estimate, the estimator is holding 5.33% escalation.
Okay. Per year?
Well, they were only assuming at that point a delay to October 2025, a one year delay.
So, yeah, the way they typically base their escalation to, we got into a deep dive with this the other day. This may be too technical, but to the bid price of the contractor, the bid date of the contractor, with the anticipation of that, that bid date, the contractor is already taking into account further escalation as their number. And then what they do is they anticipate as the midpoint of the construction duration as their escalation point, not the entire duration.
Thanks. Thank you, Sean. Anything else? I think, you know, I didn't get to weigh in last time. And I think similar to you, Amanda, I don't feel like I have enough information from a programmatic perspective of what the impact would be to just get rid of the pre-K. I think it would be important to understand that not only looking at our students now, but also thinking about all those other families that we haven't taken into account in our calculations of the housing that's coming. So I'm very cognizant of that. And, but really, I think mostly wanting to understand the programmatic impact. And then thinking about the other costs, as you said, Sean, that we would have to take into account in order to make adequate spaces in our current buildings to house pre-K in a way that we're proud of. And not just make do with the spaces that we have, but actually do it well and what that would cost overall. So I think there's not enough information to be able to arrive at a decision. At least I wouldn't be able to arrive at a decision right now. I would lean more towards keeping the project whole.
On the note that you just mentioned, do you mind if I share my screen? Sorry, last night.
Not at all, go ahead.
No graphs, I promise. Sorry, no graphs. All right. So one of the things that came up, this is, this is actually something, I apologize, I should have gave this part of my presentation. When we met with MSBA, the town administrator gave a highlight, one of the questions that got asked by MSBA, what's going on with new developments in the town that are permitted or under construction? So what, what happened was there was a breakdown of projects that are out there for 40B units and other, other ones that are there. So they were kind of broken down into two groups. Projects that we know are coming, but don't have the specific construction date for them. Projects that are permitted and expected to come on fiscal year 2024. Projects that are permanent and under construction and projects that are completed. So one of the things when MBTA community zoning came up was student yield for spaces. So the RK, RKG or the, the consultant that the planning board had, used certain assumptions for studio, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms for student yield. So essentially, a two bedroom unit, you'd have to have 20 of them before you get one student. But if you have a three bedroom unit, it automatically yields one student there. So when you, you take those numbers that we just had from there, you look at the breakdowns of what the units are for the TBD group that are there, you're looking at about 60 kids, 58 kids. For the project permitted, expected, you're looking at about 25 kids. Permanent and under construction, you're looking at about 22 kids. And then projects completed, you're looking at about, you know, 1.6 students. Now, the, this one, the Elliot Street one here is, is important because this was talked about a number of times on how that type of development doesn't yield a lot of students. The reason being is there's no three bedroom units. They're all two bedroom and one bedroom units, so the yield on them is very low. But a lot of the newer developments that are coming out, there's a lot of three bedroom units in there. So on the horizon, as we're talking about for the short term thing, and you're looking at your enrollment projections, we're looking at roughly another 108 kids coming in over the next couple of years. So again, we're already at capacity, we don't have space. So this will be another thing that you guys at the school committee will start needing to figure out.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you for that. I think that's what sits in the back of my mind as we, as we look at the plan. Other, for folks who were here, members who were here, if there are any additional thoughts on this, I think it'd be good to continue the conversation.
Sure.
I, I have a question. Does building the preschool program is able to serve all the kids in the town who are eligible to go to preschool? No, right? It's only for, it's, it's a lottery, if I remember right. Similar to what we are doing right now.
Yeah, we have a few different programs. So it's a special ed program, preschool. It also has a half day program that families can lottery into or sign up for. And then we also have a full day program at Tucker, which is also a lottery.
Yeah.
We often don't have a lottery for the half day. The half day is easier to get into, the full day is a lot harder to get into.
Yeah. So we're saying that the building of this preschool building is moving all these three different kinds of preschool program into that building? And free up the spaces in all the elementary schools right now, but actually just in Connecticut and Tucker?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, it's not universal preschool.
Along with preschool, keep in mind, fifth grade is also coming out of all the elementaries too, so.
Just can, can we just clarify one piece about the pre-K? Just to, so with the programming we currently have, we are able to serve all of the special education students who access services, who have pre-K starting at age three, plus the peers that are, we are required to have in those pre-K. Right? So we have a lottery program essentially because the full day program, which is not driven by special education, that is, that is something that there would be more demand for, for spaces if we had spaces. Right? I just wanna, Peter, can we just clarify, like Tabao's question about what like demand, we're currently, we're complying with what we're required to do for pre-K from a special education perspective?
Yeah, the only additional, yeah, the only additional.
We are doing one program beyond what we are required to do.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, our full day at Tucker is our one additional non-required preschool.
One classroom.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything else we're required to do, and we're doing it.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So I guess a question that comes up, would facilities be able to get us sort of those costs of outfitting the current classrooms that are being used for pre-K that are not, you know, whatever we would have to do? Just wondering what other information we could bring to this table that would help us understand?
I can, from a programmatic perspective, I mean, I completely agree. Love to hear from that. From a cost perspective, I mean, I think we could ask, I mean, part of this depends on like, what do we want to do? So like for a field, like what are we talking about? Like, are we talking about a artificial turf field with like an underlayman? Like, we're talking about with lower guile? Are we talking about a professional grass, you know, soccer field? Are we talking about just a grass lawn that we will reuse as a field? So like, there's different levels in terms of what cost and investment we want to put in that, you know, unfortunately, gets a little bit in the weeds there as it relates to like how much this pushes up the cost. I guess we certainly have, again, as Sean has mentioned, experts like our OPM and our architects.
I was in here as a field in lieu of that preschool question.
Sorry, I mean, that's a whole, that's a whole other conversation that I don't think is.
That was a suggestion.
Yeah, that, no, it's a great, great point. It's a whole, that's a whole other point of like, is a field even what, like, I don't think the determination on cutting out the preschool should be based on the fact that we can fit if like we want a field. And like, that's, we're gonna get rid of preschool because we want a field. Like, I don't, in my mind, that's not the reason to do it. The reason to do it is to cut costs. And the conversation of the field I brought up as it relates, like, we know that is a struggling point for the town. I think that would be a thing that would provide additional support for the town and for the project itself. And ultimately, our goal, I believe, our goal is, as we voted on before, is to get a school building project done. And so just part of the conversation is like, how do we go about doing that? And is the best way to do that, to keep the project as is, is it, given the costs, to reduce costs in some way? And that was the proposal. So that was kind of the, the overall framing of the conversation last time. And yeah, the idea of the field was simply like, again, was simply like, here's something we could do. But maybe it's not a field, maybe it's something else. And part of that, though, is bleeding a little bit in the lines of like, what is school building committee's responsibility versus our responsibility? And I don't necessarily like, and then there's the programmatic element of like, what would the principal, what does the district kind of want to provide those upper middle school students in terms of an outside experience? Is it a skate park, which I'm sure that the neighbors over there would love? Or, you know, what, like, what is it? I don't know, it could obviously be a lot of things, and those have different cost implications. In terms of, in the current buildings, we obviously, as we know, have pre-K in the current buildings. So it's a question of like, what are we looking to do? Are we looking to create spaces that have dedicated bathrooms within each? And ensure that every pre-K building classroom has a bathroom, which all of them do not. And so if that is the request, I think we certainly could figure out like, try and get some estimate as to maybe what that would be from a rough estimate perspective. Is it to create larger size pre-K classrooms? Because we know at Cunningham, some of those are like, they're various sizes. And there's some that are somewhat small, somewhat bigger. And so like, are we trying, the nice thing about the new pre-K building is like, they're all kind of equally large size. So the experience for kids across space is equivalent. That's not the current reality of our current spaces. So like, from what are we trying to create within those spaces? So again, that's just the complexity of when we get into those details of like, there are cost implications for all of those things. And so what is the estimate we're trying to provide to the committee gets challenging to, to share with honesty, because people might have different expectation of what like we mean by creating a pre-K space within our current buildings.
So it sounds to me like maybe we might, might want to start with digging deeper on the programmatic implications of removing the pre-K. And then from there, we can obviously create a wish list of things we would like existing pre-K classrooms to have and then give direction so that we can find estimates. Like, it feels like that's something that would be good to have.
Yeah, just one thing, they spoke at select board last night because there's certain agenda items we've been requesting for them for a while. One of the things that came back in public comment responses, there seems to be, or in their minds, confusion from school committee on what the program is going forward. So because of that confusion, as they put it, there, it seems that they're holding to do any actions further or anything like that to move forward. So I think the quicker we can address this and get to. So I think the quicker we can address this and get to a resolution on what this committee would like to do, we'll get the project kind of back on track.
Right, okay. Lizzie?
Thanks. I mean, just from my perspective, I'd like to sort of respond to that characterization of what we're doing here. I I don't think we're confused. I don't think there's any confusion. I think we're doing due diligence to, you know, understand all the information and the implications as we continue to try to push this project forward. So it is something that we can definitely continue at our next meeting. I agree with you, Sean, hear the need to, you know, move expeditiously to come to like the school committee perspective on those article article recommendations that the school building committee put forward. But, you know, I just don't agree with the characterization of confusion. I think we're pursuing clarity through this process. That's what we should be doing, in my view.
Yeah, I agree with that, Lizzie. I didn't have the chance to see it, so I don't want to speak too much, given I'm not a hundred percent sure of the characterization. But that if that was it, that's concerning and certainly, I don't think the point of this is for me, at least speaking of the person who brought it up, certainly was not meant to delay any action from any other committee, but rather, again, just a conversation that we want to have around like, how do we get those projects to the finish line? And like, is there something else we can do that we should be thinking of discussing to to get it there? So that's disappointing. Lizzie, I, everybody, I guess, just name, I don't think we have another meeting, though, for like four weeks because we have our governance retreat. Is that not not going to be wrong?
Meeting on October twenty first.
Yeah.
October twenty third.
Twenty third.
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
October twenty third, but we know what.
Governance meeting coming up, but it's not on the same day.
So it's the twenty third, when we meet again in two weeks.
I don't have the calendar.
You know what it was, we did not receive a calendar invite. For the twenty third.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't?
I just added myself.
And I have the governance retreat for the following weekend, one on the sixth, so that's why, that's why I didn't think we had one till the sixth.
Yes, so we do have a meeting on the twenty third.
Great, take back.
We have a retreat next week, you said?
No, it's the twenty ninth.
We'll talk about that. But yeah, no, it's, we do have a meeting on the twenty third in two weeks.
Fantastic.
All right, I just want to summarize what I heard from last meeting and this meeting about this new school building project. So it seems like the pre K building is very necessary because we do need to free up the space inside those the two, the elementary schools and use them for art classes or music classes, for example. It seems like these art and music are the program that's suffering from not having a dedicated location for that. So with that being said, like, the pre K program seems like it's logically should be built. And according to what Sean just shared with us, that it break down into just a hundred to a hundred fifty dollar difference per month in our tax.
Per year.
Per year, in our tax. That's like two cups of coffee, if you go buy coffees outside. I don't want to buy coffee outside, so just want to put it into concept of people who are listening online or in on the podcast, that it does not make a huge difference in our daily life by keeping the pre K buildings in this project proposal.
Yeah, I do, I do want to sort of voice so that there are sort of folks that have fixed income. So a hundred and fifty dollars may not seem like a lot, but it may sort of definitely, you know, so for some folks, they would feel it differently. And I think there, if I understand it correctly, there might be ways of mitigating that so that we can protect sort of our seniors, for instance, who live on fixed income so that the impact is not felt in the same way. And I may be wrong, but I, that's what I, so Sean.
Yeah, sorry, if you watch.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Yeah, if you watch select board meetings, they are working on senior income restricted tax breaks for some of this stuff in anticipation of, you know, an operational override coming, there's debt exclusion at some point. So so for 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 that group of citizens, they are targeting some type of relief form.
Right. So I think that's important to note that and and make sure that we we're taking that into account.
So I think for me, I'm, I, what you shared is great and all the supplemental information that you provided is awesome. You know, looking at additional locations for fields potentially that we could build down the road is all great. I know, I think when I look at this like kind of holistically and look at like the earlier part of our meeting when we were looking at, you know, our data, you know, and the resources needed, I I also kind of want to get those numbers to kind of understand because it might be several different asks that we're going to the town for, right? And that's where I have some concerns in terms of, it's a, it's a lot we're asking. Maybe potentially all at once, you know, and I don't know the timelines of those and I know we're working through that information. So and I just want to kind of keep it in perspective. I mean, Selena, you bring up a really good point about our seniors on fixed incomes. I was on a call for the seventh grade Quebec trip last week and parents are asking, how can I get this financial assistance for the nine hundred dollars that it costs to send their kid on the trip? So we have to take those families into account too. So I just want to make sure, even though it's only a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars or eleven hundred dollars annually for the next thirty to forty years, there are families who with students in the schools right now who can't, you know, who might not be able to participate in a trip that will enhance their learning experience in that particular year, that might have to not be able to go. And same thing, I know with the eighth grade D C trip, a lot of students want to go to that. But P T O had to raise a significant amount of money. And again, we're going back to the same people asking repeatedly to support our students, right? And support our buildings and support our teachers and our districts. So we just have to be mindful and just kind of keep it into perspective. So I think in addition to all of that reconfiguring classroom space and all of those additional costs and when I get into into facilities next, we'll have more numbers to share. So so again, I think there's a lot and I I think for me personally, it would be really helpful to kind of have all of this information in addition to the schools. I mean, the design looks great, you know, I I love how creative they got with the the playground space using kind of, kind of, you know, kind of using the curve of the landscape to create that. I mean, it's beautiful, it's very creative, you know? But I want to make sure that all the effort that's going into this, it also happens, right? So I just want to be realistic and anyway, I I think there is a lot for us to talk about and I don't know like how quickly will I'll be able to come into, you know, a decision because there are a lot of moving pieces and parts in this, so and there are a lot of layers. So I mean, I hope we can continue the conversation and and support you as needed and, you know, and do all of those things. But again, we just want to make sure that it's a positive outcome.
So just one thing on that too. So, you know, for myself, I'm a single parent, single income, so well aware of, you know, the taxing implications and costs associated with that. I was stunned at a hundred and seventy three million too. So, you know, our entire committee is aware of that and things. The one thing, the way I look at this is, you know, this project, you know, some people are talking about it as expense for the most part for the town. For me, it's an investment.
No.
It's a hundred and seventy three million dollar investment we're putting in the town. This building, when it is built, will last fifty to seventy five years. Think of the number of children that will go through there, put a dollar value to that. And that's, you know, I I just state that because that's my mindset on this entire.
Oh, absolutely.
You know what I mean?
One hundred percent, I absolutely feel that way and and I'm glad you brought that up. I think, I think it's just realistically, it's like, you know, it's with the cost of things currently and, you know, cost continuing to rise and just incomes aren't going up at that level. So we just have to be mindful that, you know, want to make sure that whatever we put out there, people do support it because if they don't support it, it doesn't happen. So just want to be realistic.
I gotta say, one of the things I do keep struggling with is like, how far down the line are we going to keep kicking us? Right, it's something that we've needed and we've known we needed, but we keep pushing it. And this is where I think it's not a, you know, a zero sum game, but I do have, I do struggle giving up sort of what we, through a very careful analysis, determined that we needed the space for both. Right, like, that's how we got there. And so to keep pushing it, it does feel to me like we're just delaying the inevitable and we're just pushing it off to future families, right? Like, it's not, it's something that it's going to be there. It's like we find ourselves in the same situation around an operational override. We've known we needed it, but we just, oh, not this year, not this year. And so all of a sudden, these two things are colliding, but that was our own doing. So it, we we asked for it to come together at the same time. We could have taken care of the, you know, operational override, you know, sooner. So it's just, and and why are we asking then our, you know, the students to suffer longer? Because we didn't do what we needed to do as adults in the town. So that for me, I struggle with that and and so I I feel like I'm at the point where I need to be convinced that we don't need the preschool, convince me. Because I I am of the mindset that it's worth investing now. So we are setting generations up for a better, a better experience. But I don't think we're going to resolve that tonight. I don't know, Lizzie, if you have anything else, otherwise I will.
So can I just ask then, so I I'm, I guess I'm confused on where, what is needed? What is needed from us in order for you to be able to move, in order for the select board to be able to move forward? Like, is there something that we are, I, because I, I guess, I'm just going based on.
I think they're wondering if we're going to cut the program.
Yes.
We have to keep the pre K or not keep the pre K, right? But Lizzie?
What we need to do ultimately is take votes here on recommendations for warrant articles for the town meeting. School building committee already voted those recommendations. The conversation that was begun at our last meeting has just been continuing is, you know, are we looking at something other than what the school building committee already recommended, which was the full hundred and seventy three million dollar project as as proposed? So that's what we're currently considering. Now, the timeline of like, when we need to actually deliver the recommendation on the warrant articles for the warrant committee's consideration, you know, I think that's not hard and fast, but as you mentioned, Sean, you know, we we do want to weigh in on that sooner rather than later. That's, that's what we're currently considering. And I think based on this discussion, you know, I think who I will work with, you know, you, Peter, Anna, facilities, Mark, school building committee and and Selena, one of you, you know, to just see what is it that we're able to collect as information that responds to some of the additional questions that haven't raised tonight, that we will be able to then consider in our next iteration of this discussion at the next meeting. Amanda, does that make sense? So, you know, the question of the pre K was raised in relation to the decision that the school committee will take around that hundred recommendation. And if we were choosing to change the program, you know, that is a vote the school committee would have to to undertake. That's the school committee's responsibility. As of right now, what we previously approved was this is an upper middle school with a pre K onsite. So is that, are we continuing, you know, if we're staying with that recommendation, we don't need to vote it to be diff, you know, to stay the same, but if we are going to change it, that is something that we would need to do. Does that answer the question you were raising?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Sean, I do have a question. In terms of, so you mentioned earlier that we will probably find out about M S B A funding either late November, beginning of December timeline. When they, you know, and if we decide like to go that route or explore that route further, will they have any input into what we decided would be our solution for space needs? So we've decided on an upper middle school and a pre K. If they get involved, will they come in and kind of do their own assessment?
Yeah, great question. So when I said you hit the reset button, you do, you go all the way back to the beginning. They'll actually start searching for sites again. We all know there's no sites, luckily we have a site. Hopefully they'll hold them in, but the educational program there, they'll do a feasibility study where they'll look through multiple options. For example, when we started this process five and a half years ago, we were thinking about building a new elementary school. So they would most likely maybe offer that as an option, maybe adopt what we've already done and have multiple options there. And then through the school building committee, they'll get weighed out and, you know, recommended on which one happens. So yeah, it's it's a full reset when they do that, so it's, yeah, starting all over again. The other thing too is, it was mentioned last night too, with select board, the makeup of the school building committee is determined by a certain makeup of the the way M S B A does it. So I don't think the entire school building committee would get replaced, but I think it would get augmented with additional members there too.
Like they would add more members?
Yeah, there's certain ones, I know for procurement, if you get the acronyms like M S. Yeah, thank you. But there there are certain requirements, you have to have a registered architect. We do, you know, they they like people from the construction industries, myself and some others, we've got that. But there are certain other ones that they need on there specifically. And those roles, like I said, will probably augment what we got now too.
Okay, so I think we're going to close the conversation for now. And we're going to move on to, thank you, Sean, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
To the Have this conversation, hopefully it's earlier in the night. It's all exhausted by the time we, like, my brain is running.
To the facilities.
Okay.
Conversation.
All right, so facilities. I sent you all an update from our September sixteenth meeting. And so what we did was have a continuation of that meeting on the 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 week after on September twenty third. And basically, we had the architect who was there for that September sixteenth meeting, but then she was joined by Larry Sping, who's the partner at Arrow Street. And what they did was kind of, she provided a recap, there were a couple of members who weren't there. So she presented an initial recap of the floor plans that were all shared, Mark shared with you. And then she also looked at like potentially what they talked about was looking at the third floor and fourth floor. So basically dividing up the 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 third floor into three classrooms, full sized classrooms and a smaller teacher's room lounge type thing. And so the the change that she looked at was maybe making those all four equal sized classrooms. So in case a teacher's room needed to be converted to a classroom, you know, as space needs increase, that it could, it could do that as well. So that was kind of the big change. So basically, we we discussed things like, you know, moving, moving the pre K upstairs to the third floor. So when we convert, create a whole new space there, could we kind of configure that space? We just talked about, you know, configuring spaces in our existing buildings to upfit for pre K. The main cost would be, you know, like adding up, adding bathrooms, which would drive the cost up significantly. So that was one of the discussion points. One of the other requests that we had at our September sixteen meeting was for to get estimates for each floor individually. So they came back with for the third floor alone, it was one point seven, six, seven million dollars. And for the fourth floor, which was going to be the library, a couple of offices and like a technology room was going to be two point two million. And obviously, there's an equipment lead time for the fourth floor just because they need to order all the mechanical, electric, plumbing, all that material, all that stuff that could take several weeks long, you know? And then obviously, these costs don't include design F F E or other project related. And then obviously these costs don't include design FFE or other project related costs. So we did some discussions and, you know, um. What we, I think the initial budget that we got was about three point nine million dollars. So we had last spring decide, you know, we had gotten an initial estimate for one floor, which was two million dollars. So technically we're not far off from that, but now the scope has kind of doubled. So we're looking at, I think it was like fourteen thousand square feet, like over the two floors and the stairs and all of that stuff that they need to do. So, uh, we discussed, you know, maybe doing the third floor on its own and then doing the fourth floor potentially. And, you know, ordering some of the stuff in advance. So kind of just do it in stages or kind of doing it all together. Um, and if we were to do it all together, we would, you know, in a perfect world, we would need funding this fall in order to hit our timeline of September twenty twenty-five. But because of the delays and, you know, the lead times. If we were to do both floors together, it would be September twenty twenty-six. So it would be delayed a year. And then we talked about, you know, the, obviously the, some of the steps that we discussed tonight, like, you know, like, um. It would have to get voted on our, our, our committee, and then it would have to come here for discussion. Capital Committee, Warrant Committee, Select Board, so on and so forth to town meeting. So, um. So I think what we looked at, um, the, the number we kind of like roughly threw out there was about five point three million dollars total. So we have two million dollars. So we need another three point three million dollars to finish those two floors. To create those four classrooms, office spaces, breakout spaces, the library and additional office spaces. It would have, you know, um, a room for, uh. Uh, community schools and so on and so forth. So it's really just, you know, we have makeshift classrooms right now, um. Offices and closets, like this would be a little bit more better working environment, you know, for people. And like you said, you know, when we create these spaces, like we just wanna make it the best we can possibly make it under our limitations. So, um, and so then, um. Lastly, uh, so what we, after discussing. We made as a committee, made a motion to recommend to this full school committee, the allocation of funds. For the completion of the renovation project for the third and fourth floor of Cunningham and Collicott, the full cost with approximate cost of the project determined by Arrow Street. It's a little wordy, but that was what the motion. So it was a unanimous, uh, vote. And so then it comes back here for discussion. So that's what I was saying, there are lots of asks, you know, um, and, uh. I think just my two cents on it, I mean, we've, we have some of the money. I think, you know, having that fourth floor space there, it is a lot of space. When you go up there, it's. It's, it's a beautiful space and it's, it's a shame that we can't fix it to help kind of help that, those two schools. And provide some, um, reprieve, um, there. So. But again, I think we as a committee can kind of discuss and figure out like what the best course of action is on that particular project. Do we, you know, it, it has a shorter timeline. It's something that we could potentially, it's, it's, you know, I feel like it's. More low hanging fruit. I know it's still three point three million dollars extra, but, um, it could be done sooner. But, um, but yeah, let's kind of, do you wanna add?
Do you want to share? I can pull up the drawings?
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, good question. So. Say best case scenario. The new school building project got approved. Is this work that we would do anyway? Do you know what I mean? Like the fourth floor, I understand, but then when you talk about the third floor, I guess that's the que, so are we? Is it, yeah, I guess that's the question. Would we still do the school building were approved? Or is this?
I would think so because. I mean, I, I think the. Even with the new school, whether we, you know, we have to, you know, reduce the programming or whatever. It's like, I think just having that extra space that we have in our buildings. I think makes for a stronger argument, in my opinion, for a new school because we've basically used every square inch of that school. I think there are a lot of people in this town that went to school here as kids. And they were up on the fourth floor and having go out to the cafeteria or art room, music room. So there is that perception that there is that space that's up there that's unused. So there's also that. So I think, I think, um, so there's a lot like, um, but I personally feel like if there is space, we will find a way to use it. I mean, I, I think we've done a really good job of doing that. So I think that our needs will continue. And as learning changes, like it evolves, I think it's great to have that space, you know, and programming changes.
We also, you know, in terms of how much space we gain by. A fifth, fifth grade moving to Pierce, we gain four, probably five classes, six classes, something like that. If we moved the current library, which houses. Two classrooms right now, plus a bunch of other spaces, and we gave those up and turned it back into a library. Then we would only be plus like maybe three classrooms or something with, with the, the new school.
With our building.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, we, I think either way. It's money very well spent on the building long term for all sorts of reasons. Yeah.
Thank you for pulling this up.
This is the, the fourth floor design. Zoom in, orient you, this side is stairwell that goes to, um, Cunningham. This side is stairwell that goes to kind of the stairwell right between Cunningham and Collicott. Bathrooms right here, mechanical space for the HVAC, the school's office. Separate office and a technology space. Uh, so you're gaining three offices up there and then the rest is kind of the open. Library, this is, plan is not populated with furniture. Uh, as you can see, the only thing is the desk. And this is just because the plan is to reuse the existing circulation desk. That's again, like a cost-saving measure. And then you have all these little nooks. The idea is to kind of use, utilize these for reading spaces. That's that. And then the third floor. This is the. Yes, this is the three classroom plan versus they also came up and, and, uh. Teacher room versus they also came up with a four classroom plan. Which I might have, so I can pull up, but essentially it's a similar idea. With again, offices along the lower wall. To orient you, if you know, the kept classroom, like right now, this is the classroom we just built the, the walls for. Up here is where the, I think it's the second grade fringe classroom, the fourth grade fringe classroom. It's right there. Um, so anyways, this is the layout. Questions on? Layout?
Any questions? I wanna make sure I see Lizzie.
Then the only other thing. Like here's just kind of some of the back of the napkin. A little bit better than back of the napkin, but, uh, the original cost estimate was, it was three point nine and some change. So four million dollars. The delay results in escalation, which we're assuming is five percent because the cost of four million was assuming, uh, June twenty twenty-five start. May or may not be fully possible. Certainly not all of it could happen at that point. Thirty percent for design construction, as we've talked about before with a full school building project, that brings us to kind of. Five point four is the total number of square footage. So the cost per square footage is. Five hundred bucks. So a little bit to the, against my argument of removing the pre K, the pre K new building is seven hundred dollars a square foot. So like all, all these costs are coming in just higher than we, we wanted them to.
I think that for me was telling of just looking at if we were surprised that the new construction. The way up was a lot higher. And you look at this and you're like, oh.
I know.
It makes sense.
Right? Yeah, we, we, as a committee, we were all in sticker shock of the price. So I think again, um. We can continue to discuss this as well, um, at our next meeting.
I think the point you make is a good one. It's just like, how are, who is the committee thinking about all the different things we're going to the town? And asking for, and I think at some point people are gonna get tired of us, just like asking for everything. And so like, you know, how do we balance all of those things?
Do a lot of bake sales.
Haven't talked today really directly about the operational override though, but, you know, I've only tangentially, so. There's a lot of stuff that we think our kids need and deserve, uh, but like, how do we get to actually getting it and not just hoping we get it?
So are we looking for that conversation to happen right now? Cause we will. But I am very conscious of where we are.
Yeah, I think what, what we can do is reach back out to Arrow Street. We can try and get the refined number, because again, the committee essentially was like. We defer a bit to school committee to determine what is the exact ask. That is appropriate to get us the funding that we need. But not too much that it turns people like, not above it. So that is my math. But, uh, we can go back to Arrow Street and try and get that more refined number for then a motion for the, whatever, the twenty-first meeting. To have that on the agenda to vote for within the context of all the, again, school building votes.
And, you know, I, one of the things I asked. Asked Arrow Street was like, are there things that we can potentially like raise money for, you know, buying? Certain things for like the library upstairs or whatever it is. And those are things that, you know, they would kind, they've kind of, um. You know, kind of, um, put estimates in, but that, if that's something that we wanted to take on, that's, you know, and like figure out like. As like the school community can work on raising and kind of helping with some of those costs. So that we can, I mean, it might not, it won't be much, but it won't be millions, but like at least it's something, you know.
Lizzie?
Yeah, so the process I think will be, it makes sense that ideally next meeting, we're able to vote. On, on this as a recommendation, um, that would then be brought forward to the capital. Committee for the town. And, you know, the soonest that this would be. Able to be voted upon would be like this, a special town meeting in the winter, if not waiting until the spring. And it will probably, it will be in the context of the town's financial picture, obviously, as far as free cash and other. Sort of status of our, our, our revenue for the year. So. We can, if it's possible to have, like something more concrete to vote on. Next time, that's great, but I also think we can just also vote. Like this would be a case where we could vote to support the facilities advisory committee's recommendation. Awesome.
We can definitely, um, get refined numbers for our next meeting. Facilities doesn't meet till the twenty-ninth, I think. Sorry, uh, the twenty-eighth, um, I believe. So, um. But we can definitely reach out to Arrow Street and get. So that we have that.
Yeah. And I mean, in the meantime, if it's not, um, if we can't. Well, we can, we can think about that. It, you know, if we wanna wait until November sixth would be our next school committee meeting after that. That gives the facilities, like advisory committee, another chance to refine this, if that's something that should happen here and then come back. You know, I don't, we can, we can just take that offline, I guess.
I, I guess my question, we did vote it out of the committee. So do we don't, do we bring it back in if we were to discuss the fourth floor?
I think the committee is comfortable with it. The only thing we need to do is actually, I think this committee, I mean, before we go to the town and ask for just like. Give us a number. We need a firm number for the ask. And so is that number three million or three point three million?
So you can bring the refined number to the next.
The refined number.
School committee meeting. So I think we can vote on it sooner.
The advisory committee is comfortable for the school committee to take from here and that, okay.
Cause they basically wrote like number, like basically it's whatever the estimate that the Arrow Street comes back with.
Okay, that sounds good. So can I just say like one thing as far as the larger conversation about, I think, yeah, we, we definitely. Should, um, talk about this as a committee as we consider these three different. Sort of. Kinds of needs that we are working through. Uh, Mark, you mentioned a finance commit, uh, finance subcommittee meeting scheduled with the select board. Finance Subcommittee on October twenty-fifth, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I do think that. You know, we can think about like, what is the sequence? What would be appropriate for us to discuss here as a full school committee? To sort of leading into that meeting that you, that you'll be having, but, and then though, you know. Conversely, like what would be things that would be. Helpful for us to wait to dig into until after that meeting has taken place. So. I think that's something that like I can. Kind of, we. I can try to work on that between now and then. I just wanna be sensitive to. You know, which, which conversations should be happening in which order. Clearly it's an important conversation that, you know, it's already begun because we've already public, like, we have already publicly.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Lizzie. I don't know if others are, but I.
A little bit.
Sorry. I think maybe the Zoom is exploding because it's so late.
All right. So I think we're ready to keep going. All right. So we'll come back to this conversation. And now we would move to approval of minutes of our last meeting. And so I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September. Eighteenth.
Still moved.
Sarah's second?
Second.
Great. All those in, I know it's a road call, cause I forgot. We'll start with Lizzie. Lizzie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Amanda?
Uh, abstained.
Val?
Yes.
And Anna?
Yes.
And I will abstain. I wasn't here. And so minutes approved. And now it's just looking at, uh, agenda items for our next meeting, which we just added a bunch of them. So thank you. I think, uh, I think I saw you typing as we went. So it's great. We have the Cunningham School Site Council. And then we also have FY twenty-six, twenty-eight capital requests that we will be talking about. And then subcommittee meetings, uh, that's what's on the agenda right now. So it's policy, facilities and school building committee.
And.
And.
The, I mean, oh gosh, my brain is now tired. Um, the task force, um, Danielle, a meeting on the twenty-first. So we, so that we would talk about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Wait, also you mentioned your meeting with the student representatives again this week?
Yes.
I'm back. Okay. So probably we add that back and, and that's our opportunity to continue the calendar discussion.
Yeah, I can, I can bring in a brief update.
We just won't have, uh, facilities other than just this fourth floor. Yeah, there won't be a meeting.
So just the conversation to continue. Okay, great.
Is there a finance meeting before this, just not with select? Is there a finance meeting before this, just not with select board?
Yes, yeah, there's one next week.
That's right. So we'll add that too. Alright, uh, with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.
I'm so moved.
Uh, Lizzie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, great.
Adjourned.